School Improvement Plans, Presentations for today, Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. Thank you for being here today. Sorry we're a little late, but no worries. Thank you for all of our staff being here this morning. Do we have an approval of the agenda?
So, yes.
Okay, second. All right, approval by motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Benway. All in favor say aye. Aye. All right, we'll move to Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Benway, if you'll lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Ms. Davis, if you'll lead us in a moment of silence.
You'll join us in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you ma'am. And we're at our reports, information, and discussion. I'll turn it over to Dr. Lockley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the board members coming back here for day two of our School Improvement Plan presentations from our schools. Yesterday was a great day. I thank the board for their engagement, questions, and discussion. I decided to hear from our schools today, starting off with Northmore High School with Mr. Patterson. So I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sine to get us going.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome back. Today we'll continue our School Improvement Plan presentations for your approval. We have the following schools today that will be presenting their plans. We're going to start with Northmore High School. We have Union Pines High School next. Then we have two of our middle schools, New Century and Southern Middle. And then we will close out with our elementary schools, McDeed's Creek, Sandhills Farm Life, Vass Lakeview, West End, and West Pine. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Patterson so he can present his information.
Okay. I am Joseph, or Joe Patterson, Principal of Northmore High School.
And welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And here we have our vision and our mission. I won't read through every part of it, but I do want to talk about, obviously, we live everything up at Northmore through the Mustang Way with respect, responsibility, and integrity. And if you've been to Northmore, I hope you see that with our students and our staff, because we really try to live it. We try to make that something that we have our sophomores, juniors, and seniors teach our freshmen every year and try to keep that tradition going. And our demographics, as you can see, predominantly white, with 58% and then 33% Hispanic, so large Hispanic population, which, one of the, you know, that's pretty typical with us, Elise and Robbins. And as far as black population is pretty low at 6%, and then our multiracial is at 3%. Okay, our GLP performance composite, you can see it did drop down a little bit in the overall, and then in the categories of Hispanic and white and EDS were the big areas that it did drop down, which we'll talk a little more about here in just a few minutes. Okay. With this, you see our English II performance numbers, and like I said, they did drop down. They dropped from 23, 24. Obviously, the all, but then the biggies were the Hispanic and the white and the EDS. And then we have our biology here, and our biology dropped a little, but I'm sure you've heard with the science being a new test, it's kind of, I think the comparison is not a fair comparison from the old test to the new test, but we are working on it, and we'll talk a little more about that as we go through. Math I performance, again, overall, it drops some, and then again, the Hispanic, the white, and the EDS were our big issues there. But then the Math III is where we rose. And then those numbers in the Hispanic, white, and And then those numbers in the Hispanic, white and EDS, of course, grew, and which I thought might be hard because they were already, they sort of fluctuate between that 60, that 60, then they'll drop down in the 50s and then go back up. So we had a, we had a pretty good year there. Now, as far as our growth, I'll be honest, in this, it's clear, we met growth, met growth, met growth, and then did not, did not. Our growth fell last year, and in all honesty, one of the things at Northmore we've always taken pride in is the fact that we may not always see the numbers in proficiency, but we see the growth numbers. And we didn't see that last year, which was, it was disappointing. And our, our teachers, you know, they, they struggled with it. They were a little shocked, just like I was, with the fact that the students did not grow because that was, that's always been our thing, is we try to grow, you know, our goal is always to grow, to grow them. If we can't reach the proficiency numbers, we tend to have a higher, higher number of students who are predicted not to be proficient, and then it'll show in the growth, and it did not this time. And so that's clearly something that you'll see as one of our goals that we are going to work on. In our first goal, it's, it's about the proficiency composite. We want to grow it from the overall composite to, from 47 to 57 in the next two years, and then English II from 45.5 to 55.5, and our math I from 30.8 to 40.8, and our biology from 43.4 to 53.4. And then of cour, and then lastly, our math III, we want, we want to keep striving, that 67.4, try to get it to 77.4. Now with that, you know, with our first goal, some of our action steps, and we didn't list everything, but some of our action steps, obviously, the check-ins are going to be huge. So in an effort to improve that, one of the things that they are doing is they're sort of taking a deeper dive into their check-ins, and they've used them the last couple of years. And they're, we're going in, in our PLTs and in our, and we, with our math, our English and our science, they have common planning, so they, they're able to take that deeper dive together as a group and, and really try to get in there and, and try to get to the individual students and see, okay, what can we do? And not just look at, all right, how did our students do? How do, all right, let's talk about why you missed this problem, but let's, let's go in there and let's talk about these questions and talk about the common wrong answers, you know, that, okay, these are, these are where we're, we're all, we're all thinking, this is the answer, let's talk more about this. And they've done that some, bless you, they've done that some, but they're really trying to get in there with a little more individualized with that. Ms. Smith is also, Ms. Smith being our part-time AP, she's with us 50% of the time, we share her with Connect. She is getting into the PLTs and working with them. She's got a background with, in English, and so one of our big things was trying to get writing across the curriculum, not just writing in, in, in English. We want them to write in, in science and math and social studies, in our CTE classes. So she's, she's helping within the PLTs figure out, okay, what are the different ways we can get them writing and, and writing to learn? And then obviously, each of the departments, our core departments have been meeting with district, with the specialists. We just had, Arianna Thompson was there yesterday. I think Elizabeth Spangler was there last week, worked with the English department. So we're trying to, to get some, some assistance from outside of the school. And then, of course, our biology teachers, which isn't listed here, but one of the things our, our biology teachers are doing is working with teachers from the other schools, figure out this new test and try to get this thing whipped. And I have a really good, I have a really good biology teacher who, she reminds me, she reminds me of myself, just, she does not like to have bad scores, and, and so she wants to go back and, and doesn't matter who it is, she wants to fix that. And so she has, I think, even going back to the summer, talking to Pinecrest teachers and working together to try to get this thing figured out. The second goal is around the growth. And so obviously, we want to carry that from a negative 4.86 to a 2.01. And with that, a lot of the action steps between, with growth and proficiency are going to be the same. I mean, it's, it's going to be very, you know, you're going to do a lot of those same things. Because ultimately, if we show, if we can show proficiency, the hope is we're showing growth too. And, and in most cases, that'll be, that'll be the case. Let me talk to you about just, let me get myself on track here. Okay. So teachers, obviously, like I said, they're, they are reviewing data. They're, they're not just reviewing the check-in data, they're reviewing their test data. I know our math has used Delta Math, and with Delta Math, they, there's a ton of data that they're able to go in there and use and assign students individual, more individualized, hey, you need a little help on this. English is, is using some IXL to do some of that. And then biology is using her test, you know, her, her daily test data, quiz data, you know, what she sees in the class. We're also doing the rewards program, and we did it last year on that foundational level, which in all honesty, a lot of our kids felt was very basic. And so I talked to Donna and, and we went to that second level this year, which is more science-based. So with that, we're, we're hoping that that helps those students with the nonfiction material. And, and I haven't told Donna this, but if, if, my goal is next year to try to, try to include, because this year, we're doing it with our English I's in our standard class. And I have a new English One teacher there who just is like building this thing up and just loving it. And so instead of doing it with a small group, she said, I want to do it with a whole group. I think it'll help, help all of them. And I said, great, let's do it. So she jumped on it, we're doing it, and then I'd love to carry that over maybe next year, and if all goes well, move into that third level, which my understanding is the social studies, and to try to continue this progress. Obviously, you know, we won't see the gains, with that being a ninth grade thing, we'll see the gains more, more so next year. But I also have my ESL teacher doing that. He, he's, he does that, I share him with Elise, and he did the first level with some of the Elise students last year, and so now he's doing that second level with his ESL students this year. So we're trying to carry what they did, you know, those gains they made last year into this, this year's ninth grade group and then keep carrying that on. All right. Any questions?
Familiar to me, Miss Kephart.
The rewards program is a Voyager sophris. It's the people who wrote letters. It is a resource that is a tier one, tier two and tier three experience for kiddos. It builds fluency and vocabulary, and there are also comprehension checkpoints. So it also builds in thinking skills, which is why the science is so critical. They'll read, they'll, there's a, they have some vocabulary word work with prefixes, roots, et cetera. And then they will take and read a fluency passage on a social studies or science topic, depending on which one. If it's the basic book, as he taught, as Joseph referred to, it would be more of a fictional passage. But then they actually, they, they read it four times, they have a cold read, then we do some work with the vocabulary, they read it a couple more times, and then they have an assessment of, okay, now it's time for you to have a three-minute read, where do you get, where did you stop, what words did you struggle with? And then they actually do a comprehension check that will focus on, and the science is really cool because it'll say, okay, this is a cause and effect question. So it lets the kids see what type of question it is, so what we're hoping is that that will transfer over to our EOGs and EOCs, where when kids see a question similar to that, they're thinking and saying, okay, this is a cause and effect, this is a thinking I need to do with this, or it's just a right there definition question. So they're really solid resources that we've been able to purchase and hopefully we'll get to continue to have this opportunity. It was, we were able to do this with some additional supports for schools based on low performing and TSI stuff, so very excited.
That helps. So are they doing it during their, would she be doing it during her English class?
Yeah, those, that group does it during their English. The ESL students are doing it during their ESL period. And there's a small pocket in, in EC class, in their curriculum assistance lab, there's a, there's a small pocket. A lot of those typically, you know, most of those students are paired, they have that lab while they, the same semester they have English, so we, we're not doing it in English and then in lab again.
Well, it sounds great to help with a lot of support that they might need, especially helping with that critical thinking part as well and vocabulary. So it sounds like a great plan, thank you. All right, anybody else? Questions? Okay, Mr. Benway?
These are more general questions than, than directed necessarily to Northmore. I think as we transition in these reviews between elementary, middle and high school, we ought to frame the intent of each, you know, okay, elementary school is for proficiency, middle school is for rigor, high school is for integrating all of those skills previously learned, for instance. So we, we sort of put us in context. It seems to me that we've, we've kind of standardized our, our ambition at a 10-point level. Everybody wants to get 10 points better than they were this past year, and that's fine, but I just want to make sure, in some cases, might that be too ambitious? I, I don't know. How do we arrive at that 10-point necessarily? I'd just like a little bit more examination of how we do that, how we establish our goals. I think as, as we lay out our ambitions, perhaps it'd be well worthwhile, I think, for a brief intermediate checkpoint during the year, how's it going kind of thing. I think that would be beneficial to everybody in the process, just to keep us, keep us on track. And those are my, my observations and questions. How do we arrive at 10 points? My main question, I guess.
I can give a general overview of that, Mr. Benway. We, we utilize what we call SMART goals with our school improvement plans, which is they're strategic, they're targeted, attainable. You know, the R can mean a couple of different things, but to me, it's reachable, realistic, something you could, to your question, is that too far? And then the T is time-bound. So, did I miss one? Okay, all right. Because I'm looking to Jamie to make sure I'm saying it right. So we've utilized that for many years in school improvement planning, and I think we set the 10 points kind of as a, as a consistent stretch goal for our teams across, across the district. But your point's a good point, you know, is that in some cases unrealistic, so to speak. But I think-
Especially when you have multiple areas that you need to attack.
Right.
You know, there, there might be some differing between the, amongst those.
I think we like to have that stretch that push ourselves, and, you know, I think the thought behind that, if, if Joe and his school grows eight points in one of those areas, they're celebrating the heck out of that, but they know they still have room for improvement. So I think that's where we've, we've set that goal, at the 10 points.
Thank you.
To your point, yesterday I noticed that Robbins Elementary did only set theirselves at a five-point goal, which I thought is what they felt like they were able to attain. So I would assume, and I think I'm correct in my assumption, that each school is looking like, they probably feel pretty confident, 10 is reachable, it'll be tough, but it's reachable, but Robbins knew that they're five. Because unlike you, I saw standardness all across except for with Robbins, and I respected the fact that they, they accepted where they were and knew what their challenge was.
Sure. That's entirely reasonable, yeah.
And there are some nuances with that, Ms. Davis, because our low-performance schools, our continually low-performance schools are coming every year in front of the board. So what you saw at Robbins is a one-year goal, and what you're seeing with Joe and Northmore is a two-year goal, because you won't see them come back in two, two more years. So the requirement of a low-performance schools is to come in front of the, the board, or continually low-performing. Robbins is no longer low-performing, which we certainly celebrated yesterday, but because they're continually low-performing by the state's designation, I mean, two of the last three years they've been low-performing, they come in front of the board to give you an update every year. That's required by the state.
Thank you. I guess, I appreciate that you said you're getting assistance from outside. My question to you would be, do you have any staff, are you fully staffed? Do you have staffing needs? You are fully staffed?
Yes, we are fully staffed.
Very good. And if there's anything that the board can do for you, you let us know.
We will. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate everything, and I think Ken had a good observation about the 10 points and, you know, making sure that we are developing goals that are strategic to the environment. I think that's an interesting point. Right, yes, yes, to make them attainable. My question was, so last year's check-ins and that, through that process, as you guys were going through that, did you see anything that was kind of, gave indicators of what, or was it just a, like, how did that?
In, in all honesty, our check-ins, when we compared it, we, probably about four or five years ago, when I was assistant principal, I started a document where we, we looked at performance matters data for, for each kid in those classes and then incorporated check-ins. And we started at the, Ms. McNeil still does that, and so the check-in data, when we compared last year's, you know, the, the check-in data, I'll just say like for English II, it was very comparable, you know, very, it, it was very similar. And so we, we felt like, okay, we're good. Now, part of that is, well, maybe one semester, being a small school, we might have three honors sections and, or two honors sections and one standard, and then next semester we have two standard and one honors, so trying to compare apples to apples. But we felt like it was pretty, pretty much on track, and then all of a sudden, the first semester hit and the scores were not what we thought they were going to be, so we were like, okay, we need to revamp. And I don't know, I don't know if we went back and tried to change things and change things the wrong dir, the wrong way. You know, sometimes you overthink it and you try to make things better, and then all of a sudden, they're not.
Right.
You know, like, in, in English, I felt like that might have been the case. And then in biology, biology was just a little different because you, you have a new test, so we don't know what we're really comparing to. And then in, in the math I, we did work with our math I teachers in an effort to try to, try to get them where they need to be. Of course, first semester last year, all we had was an honors math I, and then second semester was where all the standard math I's were, and made it hard to sort of gauge, okay, we're, we're, we're good based on our mid-year data, and we just get everything at the end. This year is a little more balanced.
Yeah, that's interesting. That's a really, especially at a, at a smaller high school, to manage those semester by semester. And, and you're right, that tendency to over-correct, I could definitely see that, as, you know, as a teacher, think, okay, oh, these scores, this first semester were like this, we need to, you know, and then, and then you find out later that that may not have been the correction needed, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, appreciate that insight. That's really helpful. That was my only question. Just a thanks to all your staff, and always great to visit up there, and they're doing a great job, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Good morning, Mr. McCormick. Welcome.
Good morning. How's everybody this morning?
Don't worry, hope you are.
Oh, I am. Doing well. Good morning, everybody. I'm Andy McCormick, Principal, Union Pines High School, here to talk about our school improvement plan for the next two years. So let's dive right in. Vision and mission, core beliefs, I'm not going to read through these, but we did tweak these this year. Tried to go along with the district strategic plan, made some adjustments. Teachers went around with this for a few weeks and we kept tweaking it, but we settled on what everybody was comfortable with. And we think it holds to what everybody talks about, being Viking strong, what we always talk about. Demographics, as you can see, large white population at 70%. Black population continues to shrink down to 8%. Hispanic population continues to grow, we're up to 14% there, and then 7% in our multi. But then also, it's not on here, but our free reduced lunch continues to grow in the community. GLP data, kind of held on where we were at 65.4, but that's with the biology test change. Saw some good improvements. That put us at 5.2 above the district and 12.1 above the state. We're very happy with that. Do have some areas that we're still wanting to work on. Our black subgroup, we really want to continue to focus on, and our students with disabilities. English two performance, saw a little, small drop-off from 70.9 to 70.3. Had some teacher changes there, but still we're 4.2 above the district and 10.9 above the state. You can see there, 24% in that black subgroup. When the population is very small, we're talking about that subgroup, that core group is, that cohort's 20 kids, and nine of those 20 kids have IEPs. So it, and you'll see a different cohort coming up. But there again, and then biology with the new test, we were happy with that, especially with the new test, 66.8, putting us at 18.5 over the state average. So we were proud of our biology department. But there again, that same cohort, our, our black percentage was 25%. So that is focused with that cohort. As they continue to move through, we're going to continue to put some extra effort into that area. Math one, we're very proud of, 54.1% in improvement from 52.7 the year before. 19.6 higher than the state average. So very proud of our math one. Utilizing IXL to help drive that, providing some differentiation among those students. We hit on that a little bit later as we talk about our goals and strategies. And then our math three was at 67.6, which is not as high as the, is only 1.2 over the state average. But had some changes in the area. We had some people that were promoted. District stole some of them.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
So, just adapting, overcome, but still proud of the performance they gave us. And you can see here, as I talked about, this is a different cohort. So you had the ninth grade cohort last year. There, the black percentage was 50%. So we're back up. Actually, there's not that much far, that, across the board, we're pretty solid except for students with disabilities. That's the biggest drop-off. But across the board, there's not a big gap there. And, and we're proud of that with that group, and we're hoping we can continue that. And then going to the, our juniors that took the math three last year, our black subgroup was 58.6. Once again, is, is not a huge gap and outperforming some of the other subgroups. So a lot of great work going on in our math department. We did manage to meet growth again, had a little bit of a drop. That came, when we dug down in, that came from our English two is what we really felt like that little drop came from. But that went along with some teacher changes and years, another year experience kind of solves that. So we'll be looking at it. B-grade, 75 score. We still want to strive to be the first comprehensive high school to hit that A, but they seem to make it harder every year. And, and now with the new plan, they're talking about even putting even more stuff into our, you know, a lot of other stuff being added to us that, that we're going to be held accountable for when the new plan comes down. So hopefully they'll adjust that before it happens. I got to read off here because folks, my eyes aren't going to let me see that. You can see here, our first goal, we have a, year one is a five-year increase, year two's a 10 on a two-year plan. So you can see we're, we're looking to shoot, move up on each one of these by 10% over the next two years. And some of it's a stretch, pushing English two to 80% is going to be a big one, as I heard, and I guess that was Donna laughing behind me. So. We're looking at the goals for this. You can see there again, we put a lot in English and IXL. I was actually in an English two, I was shivering with Ms. Phillips earlier. I was in an English two classroom yesterday doing an observation. And he has taken, he's using IXL to fidelity. He's, he's taken it, he's created an individual plan for each student in that classroom. So he's, this is even in an honors class. So he's got an individual plan. When it's time for their IXL, they go pull their individual plan and that drives where they're at in the IXL program. We're not just blankently giving IXL assignments to the whole group with its individualized instruction. So that's really, English PLT is really doing a lot with that. The help with our EC subgroup, students with disabilities. We've really put a lot of focus on co-teaching model, improving that, improving co-instruction, helping them do a lot more small group instruction, helping each other out. And right now, we have a phenomenal EC team at Union Pines. We're lucky that we picked up another strong experienced teacher this year, so we're looking to move that needle. It's the hardest needle to move, but we're looking to move it. And then we got our data talks during our monthly vertical PLTs. And then common PLTs meet weekly. So they're working, looking at the data, planning together. So we're continuing to do what we do at Union Pines. Next up, goal two, we got our teacher working conditions survey, teachers consistently enforce rules for conduct. The last survey was 87.2. There again, we want 95%. I feel like everybody needs to be on board with that, everybody enforcing dress code, everybody enforcing cell phone policies. Just, just making sure. It's a lot easier when all teachers are on the same page and everybody believes each other's on the same page. And they're doing a lot, hell, holding each other accountable, holding their neighbors accountable. So we're hoping that'll test at 90, that'll come out at 95 in the spring when we give that. Just some action steps to go along with there. Support teams, walk through observations that we do. And then our, just providing quality feedback, not just walking through and saying, hey. Try to just make it constructive and useful feedback that we give to them. Analyzing discipline data, that's going well. Right now, we're at 100 and, I think it's 101 student referrals for the whole school year, for a school of almost 1,500 kids. That's less than two a day. So we're, teachers are doing a great job. And then faculty will use the Infinite Campus parent contact logs. There's a, thanks to Kate, we were able to look at that. And our teachers are asked to make a certain number of parent contacts each week, and they keep that in the Infinite Campus log. So, and we pushed them, school improvement team pushed them. They said it was important for those contacts not to always be negative. Call them and say, hey, Johnny got a nanny on that test. That's a big improvement from last week. So let, let it all, let, let it be positive at times too. So that's one of the goals. And a lot of our teachers have taken that on as some of their own personal goals in their, in their PDPs. And then our last goal is by June 2027, UPHS, we'll increase student growth index from negative one to plus 2.01. 2.01 is the threshold to exceed growth. Really want to get back there because we had years of exceeding growth. And they were, they're making that difficult for comprehensive high schools, but we're, we're pretty sure we, we're going to be able to get there. And then the action steps that go along to support that. Any questions?
All right, let me catch up for a minute. Anybody else want to jump in? Questions, comments? Mr. Johnson, you want to go first? Or Mr. Benway?
Just a general observation. It occurs to me that I, as we look at this data, I would like to see an additional line of data below that reflects the graduating class numbers. We, we've got 24, 25 here. We've got the general view of the whole school. I would like to see the senior class data that we send out into the, the real world. I think that would be helpful.
Sir, you talked about like credentialing and everything, like what we call at a graduation, graduation rate.
I, I like these equivalent numbers here, reflected for the senior class, not just the whole school. Yes, for example.
So to how the cohort performed all the way through?
Yeah, at the end, our end state, if you will. I, I think that'd be useful, at least to me. Other than that, Union, Union Pines is a great school. Good school. You constantly hear good things about it.
I just worked hard to get out of their way. You know, I've told people a lot, Dr. Locklear's asked several times and we just talk, you know, try to hire great people, people that really care. And right now, I've got a great administrative team, some of the best teachers and support staff I've ever worked with in my 29th year right now. And they're, they're phenomenal. They care. Union Pines is rocking it pretty good right now. ROTC just got recognized as one of the top programs in the country, first time ever achieving that highest status, which gives me the privilege of being able to make some academy recommendations. So that's all, that's nice to do.
You control more recommendations than a sitting senator.
Yeah, when I see Senator, when I see-
Really? No, seriously?
When I see Hudson, I'm going to tell him that. So, but this is going well. Our girls, Oliver Falls sports teams, all won conference championships. Our ladies across the board. Football's having a great year. Volleyball won again last night to move forward. So it's, it's, it's a good year. Arts is phenomenal. Rob Hill, Barcha Band, if you can come Saturday, please come Viking Classic. So please be sure to come out for that. I'm sorry about my phone. I'm waiting on an update. I don't know if a lot of y'all heard, there was a bad wreck last night on 15501. And that was one of our teachers, Mr. Tony Wilson, EC teacher, basketball coach. He's up at Chapel Hill. So I'll try to make sure Dr. Locklear gets an update on that. But yeah, it's, Union Pines is a great place to be.
Yep.
Good place, good kids, good community, and a group of adults that care about what they're doing.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. McCormick, will you, when is the next teacher working conditions survey? Is it in 2027? Or is it this year?
It's this year, 2026.
Okay, so it is this year, okay.
Will be the actual state, and then we do a dipsticks in, in the off-year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wonderful. And talk a little bit about your teachers, like, when, do they work during their planning periods in their PLTs?
They work during, they work during their planning periods. Stephanie used to ask me how I did it, but years ago, we, I used to have common planning by department.
Right.
And the larger we continued to get, we, it got harder to do in the master schedule. So this year, I just make sure they have common planning by content. So my English one folks have common planning together, my English two has common plan together and so forth. So they're able, a lot of them meet daily, a lot of them meet weekly. They're, the expectation is weekly, but majority of them meet daily and get together, and they plan together, they look at the data together.
That's, that's really commendable. Thank you for that. And I just, I keep hearing a lot about the IXL and just when that, when your teacher has that experience, you know, when they look back at the results of what they're putting in place right now, please be sure to share that, you know, how it turns out. Because I think that's worth capturing.
Well, we, we hunted for so many years, and Donna can attest to it, to try to find something for high school teachers to utilize. Cause you know, the middle schools always had iReady and other platforms, and elementaries had that. We never had that for high school. So it was kind of create our own formative assessments and get our own data. But now we're able to utilize this, and it doesn't only assess, it helps remediate. So it's, it's a nice tool, now that we finally learned the full power of it and how to really work it.
That's powerful. And I hope, you know, we, I, I'm so excited to hear that. And so I want to make sure that we keep that and we get updates about it as teachers get more confident in using it and the students reap the benefits. So thank you for sharing that today.
You stole my thunder just a little bit, because at the end of the day, I plan on praising our administration and our support staff. Because you said just a minute ago, what I have heard repeatedly over the past few weeks and months, that it's the best it's ever been in 20-plus years. And I think that that, that needs to be shared loudly and proudly. So I just wanted to take that, thank you for saying that, because it, it helps you do what you do.
Well, without the support staff, the school's not going to operate.
No, it's not going to operate. But, but hearing that it's the best it's been in 20 years of being here, you know what you're talking about, because you've seen it when it's not been in its best. That's the point I'm trying to get. I'm sorry, I'm a little passionate about it. So the question I have for you, I know you're doing great, but how you do it when you're over capacity and strained? And, and you spoke to it just a little bit with the question she asked. But how do your teachers manage everything? And I, this is probably not the most appropriate place to get into the weeds on that, but, but helping the board understand what you guys have to overcome with your capacity issues. I, I don't want to misspeak or put words in your mouth, but I imagine that that is something that weighs on you, possibly.
They just buy in. They, they know they're passionate about it and that they got a job to do, and they adapt and overcome. That's what education's not only been about the last couple of years, the last 10, 15 years is kind of what it's been. We know what we've got to work with, we know what finances we have to work with, but there's still a job to do. And the teachers know that, and we just pivot and overcome.
Okay. Well, let us know how we can-
Teacher might have 37, but they still know that 37 needs to be taught, so.
Okay, all right. Well, we appreciate them, and you for managing it all, because it is mind-blowing to me. It's wonderful. Anyway.
Yeah, I agree. So great job. Union Pines is obviously a great high school. I love that you started to talk about the comprehensive nature of the high school, because that's the one thing that I always love to hear expressed from high school is there's so much more that goes beyond this plan, especially in a high school experience and just the excellence in all areas. You know, the arts, the sports, the athletics, ROTC, the clubs, extracurriculars. I mean, there's a lot of amazing things happening. I also wanted to reiterate the IXL, because I, being a computer guy and having dealt with digital learning for many, many years, my fear has always been programs that are not used the way that you're describing them. So, so they're actually being used to personalize and not just assigning things out, you know? And I think that's a danger that we run into, so I'm really glad that you guys have dug into using it correctly.
Well, Ms. Phillips and I had had a lot of conversations about it, because we've had it for years. You actually had it before I was utilizing it, and we kept, you know, get some negative feedback about it. And the, the more I, I kept hearing, I'm like, I'm not sure we're using this completely to, to its full benefit. So I sent a whole group of teachers down to Columbia, South Carolina last year for a two-day workshop, and they just came back like amazed.
They can do this, they can do that.
Somebody just gave them a Ferrari, you know, it was, yeah.
That's awesome. And then I just want to make sure I'm reading this correct. Is this three parent contacts a week for each student?
Yes.
That's 4,500?
No, they, they're required to make at least three parent contacts per week, per class.
Per week, per class, okay.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I was just, the numbers were staggering to me. So I was like, wow, okay.
We, we had some discussions to come up with that number.
All right.
You know, I didn't want to run them out of the building.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna, yeah, well, that's great. I mean, I think that's an awesome piece.
It comes out in the way it comes, by the end of a nine weeks, each parent should at least have been contacted twice.
Great.
In some form or fashion.
And the only other thing I would ask is, you mentioned it twice, is that things are becoming more difficult for comprehensive high schools to meet some of these goals? And I'm not sure I'm fully aware of what those upcoming challenges are.
There's some, there's- There's some, they're, they're, they're discussing pulling in daily attendance models and, uh, you remember some of the other stuff that was on that list? Yeah.
And this is a whole work session topic, I'm sure, so I don't wanna dive into it, but.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, go Kate. Kate, you're, you're more an expert than I am, but I have my own thoughts about it as well.
Absolutely, very short answer, very short answer, is that, um, there is a, a group that's been working for several years at the Department of Public Instruction to revamp the school performance grade to include more than just proficiency and growth. And so some of those things that they're also looking at ways to, they have to make sure that it's measurable, equitable, and a part of, to make it part of the calculation. So they're looking at things like attendance map processes, they're looking at things like extracurricular activities. So that team is still working on what the final process will be. Um, but the other thing I wanted to reference, uh, that, uh, Mr. McCormick definitely talked about was that you need to remember for proficiency standpoint, which again, eighty percent of that school performance grade is based on four tests. So I wanna be really clear about that. So it is a hard measure, you know, like he talked about, you won't necessarily see the end results for what we're doing at IXL until you get to two years out from where we're currently at.
Well, that's very helpful, I, I didn't know where they were in that process. I knew that process had begun under Catherine Truitt and I didn't know if they were still pushing forward or what that would look like. I know we'll get updates, so thank you, that's all, I was wondering.
Thank you for reminding us about that too. Thank you for all you do, Mr. McCormick, please tell everyone, thank you.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I have one more, I, I've been at, are you fully staffed?
Am I fully staffed?
Yes, sir.
Everything right now but an athletic trainer, athletic trainer and one EC assistant.
Okay, if there's anything.
But I've got a resident, uh, retirement coming up in science, I was just asking, putting pillars out for that in December.
Okay.
So a mid-year hire is difficult. I've got a long-term sub in an English free class right now, but we've got, uh, student teacher hired that'll be coming onboard in January.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
All right, well, if there's anything the board can do for you, let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Andy, go Vikings.
Good morning, welcome, Mrs. Coe. Yeah, we'll do one more.
Morning, Kim.
Good to see you.
All right, good morning, thank you so much for having me this morning. It is my honor to come and discuss our progress from the last couple of years on our school improvement plan and how we're going to continuously improve New Century Middle School. Our mission and our vision are the cornerstone of everything that we do at New Century. Every summer during our school improvement retreat, we review it, make sure we're still committed. Um, every decision that we make, we're looking at, all students will learn, all students will grow, all students will thrive. So we have to ask ourselves, is this, is this going to impact all, right? So we really use, um, our mission and our vision in our decision-making. And our core beliefs is how we function as a team. Um, this past couple of years, we've really tried to involve our students so that our students understand our mission and our vision. And we say to them, sometimes, you know, in middle school, it becomes challenging, but we said, all students will learn, all students will grow, all students will thrive. So when you feel that challenge, we're here to make you a future leader, we're gonna make sure our environment is safe and supportive, but we want them to be a part of understanding what our mission and vision is for them. Our demographics, despite all the housing that's went up around our area, have remained pretty steady, um, over the last couple of years. Haven't seen a lot of change there. I'm very, um, pleased to report, I, I was here a couple of years ago, um, and at that time, it was my first year in the principalship, so I'm pleased to report our progress on our, um, grade level proficiency. All of our students have grown by eleven points in the last couple of years. Um, looking at our subgroups, um, we really worked hard to pay attention and be attentive to our subgroups. We're actually attentive to every student and by doing so, we're gonna be attentive to our subgroups. Um, there's a five-point difference between our black student subgroup and a eleven-point difference between our Hispanic student subgroup. If you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, those numbers were much larger. So we really worked hard to try to close the achievement gap. Um, when I was here a couple of years ago, there's a lot of conversation about our black student subgroup and our difficulty in moving our black students. I'm pleased to report that our black student subgroup has grown by thirty-five points in the last two years. Um, we've had growth in every subgroup, our Hispanic students have grown by fifteen points, white students have grown by nine points, our economically disadvantaged students have grown by fourteen points, and our students with disabilities from twenty-four to twenty-five grew by two points, I'm very pleased to report that. When you look at our reading and our math, um, in our school improvement plan, we made a concerted effort to make sure that we were growing students' ability to read and comprehend across all content areas and write to rate us the treatment, as well as we're so grateful for our CNI team purchasing Eureka math curriculum for us and our teachers have really embraced that. So these numbers are reflective of not only the work of our amazing staff at New Century, but also the work of our district, um, giving us the tools that we need to be successful. All students in ELA grew by eight points and every subgroup grew as well. We did see, uh, minimal growth in our students with disabilities. And I will say, um, being a EC teacher at heart, I will always be an EC teacher, it's very difficult for me that our students with disabilities aren't growing the way we would like them to. We've had some staffing challenges in that area, um, we're hiring, we're, we're staffed there, but with some, some teachers who just need to continue to grow and help grow our kids. Um, as you can see, our math performance blew us out of the water, we were, we were quite pleased with our numbers. Um, our kids have dug into Eureka, it is very rigorous, our teachers are committed to it and so they're rising to the occasion in every subgroup, so we're very pleased with that. And science, science has always been a stronger content area for our campus. Um, we have two amazing eighth-grade teachers, our entire science department really works hard to gather sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um, they were really nervous about the new standards, but they did quite well with, um, eighty-four point two percent overall proficiency, a slight dip, but with given the new standards, we are, we're very pleased with that outcome. Um, and again, each subgroup showed, um, amazing growth. Um, I don't know if you guys heard about our blue party, did y'all hear about our in-the-blue party? Um, we, you know, we talked about getting the students involved with our mission and vision and our core beliefs so they understand the true foundation of our school. But we also taught them a little bit about EVOS and they're probably like, oh, Miss Coe. But we wanted them to know that, um, you know, this is their, this is their experience, right? This is their life going through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and that we have high expectations for their learning, they have high expectations for themselves. Um, we're so pleased to have exceeded growth for the last two years and especially going from not meeting growth, you know, about four or five years ago, to exceeding two years in a row. Um, so we had an in-the-blue party, which is taught them what it means to be in the blue in EVOS. It was just a great way to celebrate their hard work. We try to figure out ways to make sure that they're engaged, um, and they get rewarded for, you know, putting in that time and effort. Um, also very proud of our school performance grade that continues to grow. Um, it is because we have a very committed staff. We are, for the most part, staffed, we were fully staffed last year, um, but with very hard-working staff members. Like I said, our students are very committed, we have phenomenal parent and community support. I also wanted to take a minute to thank our board for allowing us to have two assistant principals. That has made a huge difference on our campus. Um, the ability to be able to develop those relationships with some of our students who are struggling, you need three administrators, um, in a school our size, so I really wanna thank you for giving us that. I think it's very reflective in our success. So our first goal for this, um, this school improvement plan is to improve proficiency by ten points. Um, and you can see that broken down into the small segments that we hope to gain. We're going to do so, we have restructured our intervention plan. Um, our MTS, lead, MTSS leadership team has just been phenomenal in helping us navigate our interventions and our enrichments that we provide to our students every day during our flex time. Um, again, grateful to our CNI team for allowing us to have some new curriculum this year. For intervention, we're using the, um, rewards program that I think Donna's talked about in a couple of other sessions. We're also using trans math for our tier-three. So for the last two years, we, um, we figured out, how do we get a student tier-two and tier-three intervention if their data deemed necessary? I think that's had a lot to do with the growth that we've seen with our kids. Sometimes our sixth graders are coming to us at a third grade level. Um, it's not because they haven't been in phenomenal schools and people have done the best that, you know, they can do. I think it's, we have a lot of transient students right now that are coming to us from different counties, different states. Um, we assess them and meet them where they are, so I'm grateful to have the opportunity to provide tier-two and tier-three support for them. Our ELA and our math teachers conference with our students three times a year on their iReady goals and those students make goals for themselves, so they are taking ownership in their own learning. We also developed a feedback structure and we, we're really working hard, uh, as a staff to recognize the importance of giving students immediate feedback and how that leads to mastery. Um, again, our MTSS team has developed a common tracking system so that we have data points on every student and all content teachers have access to that data so that when we are pulling them for intervention or we are working one-on-one with a student, we know their data points so that we know how to best support them. We have vertical planning twice a year and actually, we've already done it twice this year, we're probably, probably gonna meet more like four times, um, to meet vertically, um, so that we make sure that we're easing that grade-to-grade transition. And we also, um, will have student-led conferences where again, students are taking charge and taking accountability for their learning. Our second goal centers on just creating a collaborative culture and improving that by, uh, improving mutual trust and respect by five points. We're doing that by a weekly shout-out that goes out in our Centurion newsletter where staff members are affirming other staff members. We know that this is hard work, right, it's very challenging, but we wanna make sure that we're acknowledging each other for the great work that we're doing. Um, in our CLTs, which is professional learning teams, we just call them CLTs, we're making sure that the partnership is refined and that they're committed to, um, making sure that they're completing the PLC process. We, um, had a professional development at the beginning of the school year, which was phenomenal for our staff, where we worked on the pitfalls of a team and how do we improve communication with each other at a middle school. Especially now, we have six-hundred-and-seventy students, so we have to make sure that we're collaborating and that we're in line with each other. Oh, wait. Um, so in summary, I am honored to have the opportunity to lead New Century. Like I said, we have a phenomenal staff, we have very hard-working students, the support we receive from our community is just unmatched. And so I believe that that's led us to the success that we're having right now. We're not done, we will constantly, um, improve our school. I share with Ms. Phillips that every year, at the beginning of the year, we start with four big ideas. That is, we will focus on learning, not just of our students, but of ourselves. We will commit to being a collaborative culture, we will be attentive to our results. I talk about data probably more than my staff wants me to. However, we need to know, every staff member knows how we're performing and that we will continuously improve our school. So that is a commitment that we make to each other and it just guides our work together. So thank you so much for this opportunity, any questions for me?
Thank you, Mrs. Coe, that's amazing and congratulations on all the hard work that you've done. Um, I love the blue party idea, what did it look like?
So we asked our parents to, uh, donate foods in blue wrappers, so we had lots of Oreos. We had, um, blue Dori, not Doritos in the blue bag, we had Rice Krispie treats and Capri Suns. And so they ate a lot of blue food. It was during the PE block, um, we had a lot of dancing, I, um, did a lot of dancing with students. I could not walk on Saturday, but Friday was a lot of fun. Um, we just celebrated and again, we talked to them about how they exceeded what the state expected them to do. That's what they did. And what we want them to know is you keep working hard, you know, there's goals that EVOS said that you're gonna meet, but you keep working hard, you can exceed those goals. And what I love about EVOS, that's meeting the kid really where they are, right? And so even if you're coming to us on a third grade level, you exceed what they say that you're gonna do, right? And so our kids know that now, our teachers really leaning to kids with that, cause sometimes they'll say, you know, this is what the state says you're gonna do, they're like, oh no, I'm doing better than that, and they do, right? Um, and so it's getting them to, um, to lean into that. So it was a lot of fun, we wanted to do it the first year, we just couldn't figure out, you know, middle schoolers, we tried, well, it'd be fun for them, um, and so I was like, oh, if you do it two times in a row, you gotta have a party. So we, we had a party, it was a great time though.
Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
Just, uh, kudos on the student-led conferences, um, that is huge. I think you're, you know, what you're doing subtly is you're building leaders for tomorrow and you're getting them ready for high school and they're owning it, so that's gonna empower them even more. Um, I'm excited to hear about your work with MTSS, that you're, you know, you're digging deep into supporting, you know, your students with disabilities and others in that tier-two and three. Um, just very proud of the committed staff, students, parents, community. We're just so, uh, grateful to having a great, uh, community to support New Century Middle School and our students and staff, so thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
And next, anybody else?
I won't go last this time. Could you, could you back the slides up?
Sure.
Again, 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 again. That is phenomenal.
Thank you.
And you should be very proud of the work that your staff and yourself are doing. Um, it's really, um, impressive to see outcomes when you're doing the things right that you know can deliver that. Um, so, a couple of quick questions to make sure I've got it, uh, my head right, uh, around New Century. Your feeder schools, Carthage Farm Life?
McD's and Cameron.
And Cameron, okay, thank you. Um, you say you have six-hundred-and-seventy students now?
This year, we had eighty new enrollments.
I was gonna say, cause that's big, cause that, cause.
Huge jump.
Six oh six.
Yes, huge jump.
Okay, that's important to know. Yes, thank you for that. Um, I love everything you've, uh, brought together today, um, and I know that you're doing some really great work. Um, I think on a larger sense, I think it really outlines the, what you talk about the transient students that you have. I think it outlines the importance of this decade-long process of building out a way that more county schools does business and the way that we have things set in place and the leadership, um, is such a huge piece of that. Dr. Locklear should be commended and there should be classes taught about how to build leadership in a school district. And I think you're a prime example of that, and so I think you're an outstanding leader. Uh, I just wanna say thank you for everything you've done out there. I didn't really have too many other questions. Oh, the other question I had was, I thought that was really interesting, do you feel like your background in EC, how has that kind of shaped your attack method or the way that you approach?
Yeah, I think for me, MTSS is just how I think, right? I think about how do we intervene, I know how to analyze data, how do we intervene? What, at what level do we need to intervene in order for the child to make progress? That's my background in EC though, is knowing how to study that. Um, and so since I was a teacher at VAS with your lovely wife, um, I started that work there and really learning how, what do students really need to know to be able to grow? Um, and it's a skill to be able to see that in the big picture standpoint. So I do think my background in EC helps with that a lot.
I'm, I'm just glad you spoke to that because I think that's a really powerful thing for a lot of leaders to think about.
Sure.
To really have that kind of depth of knowledge behind, you know, intervention and what that means and what that looks like, so. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you so much.
Um, I, I guess if I were forced to, to place a, a one-word caption on New Century, it would be boom. Uh, you got a two-year vision that's playing out. You've got a two-year vision that's playing out right here. It's great. You place a great alliance on your assistant principals. How have you got them oriented?
We have our responsibilities that we've laid out in our administrative plan, our administration plan. I think we, we obviously use, you know, take care of those responsibilities, but we also go beyond that. When our F A report comes out every nine weeks and we usually don't wait till then, we are actually meeting with each student that failed a class. We are calling their parents. We are figuring out why did you fail the class? And we do that. Our teachers are doing that along the way, right? But the child still ended up not being successful in that class. So we meet with them. For example, I'm the sixth grade person. I have them divided by, you know, one of them's seventh, one's eighth. And we track those students along the way. We were able to reduce our F A report by 60% last year doing that. Where students recognize that, hey, we're paying attention. We're trying to get you to support you need. Cause to me, that's just communicating there's more support that's needed, right? And so by us digging in on that, that's really helped a lot of students be successful who, I just, I believe that we are having that impact. I also know that our major referrals last year were under 200 for the whole year. It's because we're present, we're in the hall, we're in classrooms. We meet with our students quarterly and we talk to them about their discipline data. Any data point I can put in front of them, they know it. But because we're a community, right? Like they are responsible for each other. So if we're not transitioning well, we all have to work on that. It's not a Kim Ko problem. It's a we problem. And so I think having two assistant principals allows us to do that work. When it was just me and one other assistant principal, we were drowning, just to be honest. We were drowning. But now we're not. We're able to really reach students, some of our most vulnerable students who need the most help. So that's been great. We're grateful for the opportunity.
Coming back to the transient piece, again, this is gonna be a growing issue over the years. That's clear. What, what kind of advanced information do you receive on inbound kids, if any?
It varies from school to school. There are some schools that send us their testing data, their report cards, everything that we need. But like I said, we had 80 new enrollments this summer. In some cases, it was like pulling teeth to get information on students. And so it just depends on where they're coming from. It depends on the school. Several of the schools, we found either the data manager wasn't working. It was just a lot of challenge to get the information that we need. So what we do now is we meet with students, we meet with their families. We talk about their experience at their former school. We talk about New Century and, you know, make sure they know our mission, vision, core values. They understand how we operate as a school. We have our junior student that meets with those new students and makes sure they're comfortable early on. So you've got some systems in place, but I would love to see more consistency in the records that we're getting on students.
Can North Carolina, I imagine you get many of your transients from North Carolina. Is that a DPI issue that might be elevated?
I'm wondering if part of it is Infinite Campus is new for like half the state. And I think some data managers, they're just trying to learn how to send records. I'm wondering if that's the problem, cause we haven't had this big of an issue in the last couple of years. This past summer was a challenge.
I can add to that if you'd like. So first of all, we started Infinite Campus two years ago. We were one of only about a quarter of the state that did so. This past year, the rest of the state came on board. So well over, about two-thirds-ish of the state came on board. In addition to that major change that happened right at the peak of when all those records requests are happening, we also, across the state, it is standard in most counties, data managers are 10 or 11-month employees. And so at the peak of when most students are transitioning from one school to the other, there's not a data manager to process that within the system, whichever system you're using, and then sending the records requests. In addition to that, DPI does have some standard guidance on what has to be shared and within what time range. That time range is pretty wide. So the short answer to your question is kind of a combination of all of those things happened at once this past year. We anticipate it getting better, but standardized practices across the state could absolutely help with that, yes.
You a voice on that group?
Yeah. And I, and I articulate that quite often, yes.
We're gonna put the rose here.
Yes.
That's an issue I think would be worth elevating.
Absolutely. And I will say that DPI has worked. We've, we've put forth multiple issues. Some districts with the Infinite Campus lost track of sending the actual record, not just hitting the button and transferring them in the system. And that has been already rectified. So DPI is aware of some of those issues and I will continue to advocate.
And some of the students are from out of state.
Some are from out of state, for sure.
Yeah, that would be interesting too. Thank you.
So in conclusion, back in, I think it was August, I dropped in on Ms. Coe unannounced, looking to eat breakfast. And she, right off the bat, figured, figured out what I was missing here and sent me down the road to Crane's Creek. So I appreciate the guidance.
Well, I said, no one invited me to breakfast.
Thanks very much.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I remember that morning, Mr. Benway. Congratulations. Well-earned. Job well done. And I, I remember I was new as you presented last, or your first time. I was as a, as a new school board member, but the way I read you was just as a meek woman, who in meekness is strength under control. And you are a strong woman with great control.
Thank you.
And I, I thank you and we are blessed to have you where you are. You grew by 80 students.
Yes.
You, you mentioned very briefly, you brushed on by it, but what kind of staffing needs might you have for this year or?
Yeah, we're just, right now, we're just struggling to find a chorus teacher. And it's, we're, we're turning over every stone looking for a chorus teacher. We have a part-time person in place right now to help support our music department. But otherwise, we're grateful that we have applicants. We have had a couple of turnover positions this year, but we've had great applicants and been able to hire people. So it's been good.
So you, and you, you feel prepared?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Very good. And you have just your culture and you're, you have a family, the Centurion family. I know if you're your teachers and they are passionate and we're just, we're thankful to have you where you are and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coe.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Appreciate your leadership.
We'll take a five-minute break. We'll come, well, maybe seven. We'll come back at, what's that, 10:40? Come back to order. Thank you for joining us and thank you for joining us from Southern Middle School.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. I'm Sandy Bear, the principal of Southern Middle School, and I appreciate you all having me here today to share a little bit about the great things that are happening at Southern. To start, I just wanted to touch base. We did come together as a school improvement team and a school to make some adjustments to our vision. So our mission stayed the same. Our vision, we adjusted a little bit to better align with the district strategic plan. And then we added some core beliefs that we all truly felt strongly about. The two that I know our staff really wanted to have in there was making sure that we have a collaborative culture that not only included students and teachers, but our parents and the community. The community has truly been rallying around us and supporting the work that we're doing there. So we wanted to make sure that that was in there somewhere. Also, just making sure that all teachers were equipped, empowered to meet, to meet the learning needs of all students. We have a lot of new beginning teachers and so making sure they felt comfortable to try to keep that. to keep that retention of our folks. These are the Southern Middle School demographics. Since then, we are, as of the 17th of September, we were at 677 students, so we have grown a little bit over the summer. This is our overall grade level proficiency. So this year, we did go down. We did take a little bit of a hit. Overall, we've seen gains overall through the years with all of our subgroups, but this year, we did take a hit and that was math. We took a hit in math this year and we'll see that on the next slide. So our overall grade level proficiency for reading, we continue to grow in our reading. I would say that we, this is due to the most consistent teachers. So our ELA teachers have been most consistent across the building in the past couple of years. And then if you can take a look at math, we dropped in math. Math was kind of a revolving door last year. We tried to put best people in those positions and there was just some turnover mid-year and some long-term subs and so that we feel like was difficult. And so about December, when we sat down as a leadership team, we knew we were going to take a hit here. We tried to add some different intervention groups in, but certainly this is an area of focus for us moving forward. This is our science performance. So as I know, several folks have stated the re-norming of the science test. We did take a hit here as well and so I'm hopeful we have, CNI is coming in. They've, they're helping us with all content areas, but science is one that I know that there's a focus in science and math, but all science, math, and ELA, CNI has their folks coming in, thanks to Donna and her team, supporting our PLTs every single week, making sure that we are on the right path for success. Across the board, the past couple of years, Southern Middle has met, met expected growth. Last year, we did not. Again, we exceeded growth in reading, if you just looked at that, but our math certainly again was the area of concern. We also noticed that we wanted to be able to, we had a, we have a focus this year on some of our AIG identified students, recognizing that they might not have made the growth that we hoped that they would have made. So we're very hopeful, as you can, as you'll see coming up, that this can improve. Again, the overall school performance grade did drop a couple, a couple points. Again, Southern Middle School's school improvement team and the staff truly believe that Southern Middle is a B school. And so in our next, in the next couple of slides with our goals, you'll see how we tried to make a plan to get us there. So this is our first school improvement goal and so again, this is a two-year goal. It is that 10 percentage points that we're hopeful to increase in each content area. We feel like if we can grow 10 percentage points in each area and then exceed growth, we'll be able to be a B school as we truly believe that we are. With our action steps for this, I wanted just to touch on, every member of our school has a school improvement or a professional development plan goal is our goal one. So everybody shares the same professional development goal and then in their action steps, they help, they decide, how can I support this for Southern Middle? So even our en-cour teachers, they support us during our intervention blocks and teach small groups. So they are doing things along the way. They're, they're utilizing some of those content-driven standards during their instruction as well to try to push us over the top. Another, another piece of our action step is, again, those professional development goals. Each content area has worked to create a proficiency goal and so they are tracking data within their own content area so they can see how they're growing kids within their own content. And that's, the four core areas are doing that. We have our multi-classroom leaders. We are working closely with them to provide professional development for teachers. We are using learning focused this year as we have last year and we're working to provide that professional development on best practices within the classroom. And we, each time we have a flexible learning day, which is one of our restart flexibilities that we can discuss in a little bit, we take that afternoon and we provide professional development to our folks on utilizing best practices. And so then the instructional team does some walkthroughs. We have some targeted things that we're looking for, dependent on the professional development that we just had and we're monitoring that. We're monitoring it to see who needs a little bit more support and then we're monitoring it so we can celebrate the folks that are really trying to dig in and put those things to good use. So since we did not meet growth, we did add a growth goal this year and so we, in two years, the hope is to exceed growth at Southern Middle. Some ways that we are going to try and reach that goal is through our dragon time, which is our intervention block. And during that time, we look at I-ready data, we look at check-in data, we try to, I work with our curriculum, our ISF, and we try to pinpoint which kids should be grouped together. During this time, I know our AIG teacher is also supporting and we're trying to get some other teachers, science or social studies engaged in some of the enrichment classes to try to really move those AIG kids. On Fridays, every Friday, we have a weekly rundown and so students stay in their homeroom and they complete a sheet where they are tracking their grades, missing assignments, their, their behavior. The teacher, they make goals for the following, the following week. The teacher pulls students to them and has like a little mini-conference with them about their progress. So we started this last year, but we felt like that was with some targeted students. We felt like this really could support even our higher-level students and so we pushed it out to our whole school. Our third goal this year is based upon, is a culture goal. And so it is again, a two-year goal. This teacher working conditions does go out this spring, but will, this will be continued, this will continue to monitor through the two years using dipstick surveys from our, that our school improvement team has created. And so we have a focus area of these five, these five areas. I know we worked closely with Aberdeen Elementary this summer and we worked together to create continuums, student management continuums. What we recognized was in both schools, there were a lot of brand-new teachers. And so understanding what's my responsibility to manage students in the hallway? What's my responsibility on how I'm managing students in my classroom? Knowing the scope of that, it may not be known. We may find it second nature, but a lot of folks didn't. And so having those continuums, letting teachers rate themselves on where they feel like they're falling and then pulling that back during any conferencing with that, with that teacher after an observation, or if we're recognizing that there's an area that we need to have a conversation, then we will and pull those continuums out and use that as a reference. Again, we have identified the top three to five students with repeated behavioral offenses and again, have been working alongside Aberdeen Elementary as kind of our arcade experience here, just to hone in on a tier-two intervention for our students that are struggling with behavior. And so in doing that, we're hopeful that we can provide those tier-two interventions on behavior alongside of our academic interventions to truly see some positive outcomes there with those students. We are, we still have our restart flexibility and so as you know, we have our restart cal, our flexible calendar. In those days, we pull, we invite students to come for a half-day in the morning. It's dependent upon multiple, multiple points of data, whether it's check-ins, I-ready, whether it was their EOGs, that's where we started with this, this year. And we invite them to come in, since they've banked hours. Students who are not necessarily struggling don't have to come, but they're certainly always welcome to come. We are this year also inviting our world history students to come. We are also providing a math recruitment, retention, recruitment and retention bonus. And so all of our math teachers receive a bonus. That was one way we tried to get math teachers. Again, that was, that was an area that was really hard to find people and so using that flexibility, that budget flexibility has been, been great and we are currently fully staffed in math, knock on all the way. We are also, we've also used restart flexibilities to hire an instructional assistant to support in the sixth and eighth grade math classes. So again, as I mentioned, we, our size has grown and so our sixth and eighth grade groups are much larger. And so trying to have an instructional assistant in there to just support that large group, hopefully will also allow the teacher to really dig into the material. Any questions for me?
Okay, first this time, if I can. We got the memo and we dressed the same today. Nobody else did. This may be a silly question, but I might ask it anyway. An instructional assistant is one and the same as a teacher's assistant?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And you are fully staffed? I've been asking everybody that and so far, it sounds like we're...
Pretty much. We just lost an ELA teacher, but we have a plan and so we should be good to go next week.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm confident that you got, you out, you all can, can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am really impressed with your dragon. Oh. Okay. Yeah, I am really impressed about your weekly rundown and your dragon time. That seems to me to be time very well-spent, where the students know exactly where they are and what they have to do and what help they need. Do you feel that that's, you said this is your second year of doing that?
So last year, we did it with targeted students, students who were not performing well or struggled with their behavior.
Okay.
This year, we felt after speaking as a school improvement team, that it would be beneficial for all students to recognize what their grades were, celebrate that, and also make some goals for moving forward.
Okay, and you really see that working?
I do and the teachers love it.
I would think so.
It's an opportunity, I get the opportunity to pull kids and have those conversations about their grades and their behavior often and so teachers don't get that opportunity. So them having this time to really, it helps them build that relationship piece with their students and let their students know they care, more than just about if they're behaving and sitting in class, but that they really care of a passing, are they understanding their work? What are you missing? Can I help you with that?
Yeah, I, I really like what you're doing there. The other thing that I really liked is that you're using your budgets to give math teachers more and I, I like that and I really think that that's what we need to do. Smart, very smart. Your behavior issues, I'm interested in that.
Sure.
You want to tell me some more?
Yeah, so we, we, there are some for sure, but I feel really good about the temperature in the building.
You do, okay.
I do. The biggest concern is the either non-compliance or inappropriate behavior. Those are our top two concerns.
Inappropriate behavior, tell me.
Just meaning, doing, being off-task, being silly in class, not being attentive.
Oh, you're talking about minor annoying things?
Right.
Okay.
Right, and those, those really are, we've talked to teachers about if so many times, they've, that's kind of a minor offense, then they need to lift it and move it to an office referral.
Okay.
Because then it needs to involve us having a conversation with them and their family. And so I know as far as looking at our office referrals and our minors, they look heavy and so I would attribute that a little bit to, we've asked them, if you're not getting a response, a positive response, then let, give us an opportunity.
I, I would be proud of that.
And I am.
I would be.
I, since being there, this is my fourth year at Southern and we've put a lot of work into the culture of the building and I am really proud of our kids. I'm not seeing angry behavior. I'm not seeing that. And so again, there's still a lot of work to be done, but there's a lot of positives to celebrate.
Okay, well, I, I think you're doing a super job. I'm really impressed with this. Very nice.
Could, could I say one more thing, just in light of where Ms. Bruno went, where you went? Whenever I visited with you last year, we were walking around, we happened to be in a classroom and there was a behavior issue while we were, I don't know if you remember this or not, but you seamlessly made your way to that child and, and just demonstrated exactly what I believe to be the new, that, I don't want to say a new culture, but with the culture you're trying to build. So you led by example and you, it just, it was, it was good to see. So again, I have full confidence that you'll continue to do well.
Mr. PMW?
Yes, ma'am. First, an editorial comment, with Nick's metaphor thrown in. The horse having left the barn, we slammed the door and say, by the way, we've got a panacea for you. You can operate like charter schools. We're going to let you do that and this is going to help fix your problem. Why don't we all always operate with charter school rules? If that's, if it's so viable, then we shouldn't adopt those things across the board.
Amen.
Yeah. You would think.
That's for the record.
You would think, yeah, so.
I've sort of lost the, I've sort of lost the bubble on the professional teams, the multi-classroom leaders, instructional teams. What accommodations did you make, if any, to integrate them with the PLT process?
The, the multi-classroom leaders?
Yeah.
So our, we have three. So we have one who is a generalized multi-classroom leader and she is, she sort of cares for three teachers and truly digs in to support them. And so she's trying to, she might not be able to be a part of their PLT, but she meets with them aside of that and tries to work with them on planning a well lesson, a lesson that's written well and planned out well from bell to bell. Because again, that's where we're kind of seeing the loss of instruction if we're not planned out well. So she's trying to help with that and include some of those high-yield strategies, those best practices within their lessons. So that's how she's being utilized. Our, we have an EC, our exceptional children's MCL, and she is just fabulous. We have all, mine, we have five, I think, five beginning exceptional children's teachers. And so she sits with them during their PLT, she sits with them aside from that and just tries to support paperwork, tries to support how are you best serving these kids? And then has also actually just recently provided professional development for our staff on supporting our EC's population within the generalized classroom setting. And then our, our last MCL is our, one of our, is our art teacher. She is an MCL. Her focus is student engagement and student management. And so she goes into classrooms, she observes first, sees what's going on in the room and then she'll oftentimes co-teach, give those supportive measures during their instruction and then leaves them with little nuggets of try this, try this, then let's debrief and talk about, did that work for you with the students that you may have in your classroom?
Great.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, sure, yeah, sure does. It'll be interesting to watch how this whole thing evolves.
A hundred percent, I agree.
Improves. No, I think that's probably about it, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, good stuff, thank you.
Thank you.
Johnson?
Uh, yeah, uh, also reiterate, thank you so much for everything you and your team are doing. I did wanna ask, you talked about the budget flexibilities for math teachers, um, how much? What is the, uh-
Um, it's thirty-two fifty for the year. So, we are splitting that midway, so they'll get part of it in, um, December and part of it at the end of the year.
Smart. Make sure they stick around, right?
Retention.
I love it, I love it. I think that's extremely important, and I think that's a sizable amount, so I'm really glad to hear that. And I was, um, wondering what that number was, so, thank you for that. I think, and I'll do a little editorial, I guess. I think one value for me that I'm finding out in this process of, of hearing all these plans is the clear need for staffing to be a, to be fully staffed. Because, you know, when we hear about these gains going down from year to year at certain times, it's very consistent, that it's because of staff turnover or a long-term sub. And I think combining that knowledge with the MCS way, we've built a culture and a leadership in place, that if we get the people in to the culture and into the building, then we can work it and make it happen. So, um, I think this bonus idea is a really interesting one to keep fresh in our mind. Other than that, um, just wanna say that, um, I love the connection that you spoke about with Aberdeen Elementary, I just think that's, uh, really important to keep that connection tight. I know that you and Sean work together, and I know he probably won't stop bothering you. So, uh, definitely encouraged to hear that, um, I know there was some overlap also with the transition. And I'm sure you found that to be helpful too, so. Yeah, that was all my questions, but just to say thank you for what you're doing, and appreciate your staff.
And thank you, Ms. Bear, this has been amazing, I just have a couple of comments. I think your work is very strategic, it is laid out, you know, with all of your different action steps, and you've got a lot of action steps. I had a question about the first goal with teachers tracking content proficiency for your students with their PDPs, what kind of tools and how are they tracking that proficiency?
Sure, so, that, that's a, that was a new attempt this year, and so, we wanted them to truly dig into wanting to, um, to take that goal and, um, truly track that data. So, we gave them the opportunity to choose. So, some teachers are using their unit test.
Okay.
Some teachers are using check-in data, some teachers are using I-ready and check-in data, and some teachers are using some common formative assessment data. And so, we've given them the opportunity to choose, different content areas have chosen different, different ways, just that best suit them. Um, and so, it will be interesting to see how that continues to play out. We do go during those flexible learning days, we take some op- we, there's an opportunity for us to pull up our professional development plans, and then reflect, and how are we doing? And so, um, there's been good conversations so far, and they are keeping track of that. But it will be interesting to see if there, if teachers are seeing, is there a better, a better way to keep that, through, by the end of the school year.
I think that's great, it, I mean, it's good buy-in, um, and they've got different options, they've got the tools there to help them. And I think that conversation, that reflection is gonna be very powerful to help move the needle. Ms. Davis, did you have a thought on that? I agree with Ms. Bruno that the weekly rundowns, that's great, I love that you're, you're doing it across the school, I think that's really a powerful strategy, to build that student, um, you know, engagement, to help them to own it, and to see their futures, you know, see how they progress. We all like to look at how we're doing, when we're losing weight or our blood pressure. So, uh, and I think that's powerful, um, I, I still want us to capture those moments, um, so we can replicate. I think that's powerful. I was interested, you've mentioned World History students, so talk about that in just a minute.
We just, uh, the, it's-
Oh, sorry, sorry. Did I, did I just say something near and dear to your heart?
We just were giving them an opportunity to work in the building, during those flexible learning days. So, and, you know, kids bank that time, so we're kinda giving them a space to be able to work on that in the building, um, as they're doing it at home too, but in the building, um, sometimes that's helpful as far as childcare, sometimes that's helpful as far as they can ask a question to the adult in the room, but, um, but really, that's the extent of that.
I think that's great, I mean, yeah. And the, you know, just really quickly, um, reiterating what Mr. Johnson said about the connection with Aberdeen Elementary, and you're using MTSS, you've got your Tier Two, your behave, behaviors, student management strategies, and that you're engaging with your teachers to reflect on those practices that help our students self-manage and do what they're supposed to do when they're in the building. So, continually teaching those behaviors that they're gonna learn at Aberdeen Elementary, so. Well done, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bear, appreciate your leadership.
The law doesn't allow it.
Legislation.
That's why, and the opportunities with the restart opportunity, we've applied for it, because it does give that flexibility, um, and we still score touchdowns. But, uh, so I would agree with, with that, uh, Mr. Benway, it's, it's not currently allowed by general statute. His question was around charter school flexibilities, that our restart schools are able to get charter school flexibilities, and why can't we just do that for all of our schools? Currently, general statute would not allow that. So, that's, um, what the question was about, and I certainly agree with that. Yep, yes sir.
Good morning, Ms. Ovi, welcome.
Good morning, thank you for having me, I'm so excited to be here, I'm Mackenzie Ovi, the new principal at McDee's Creek Elementary. And you're gonna see our school improvement team, that, our plan, that was created by our school improvement team, which was administration, supportive staff, teachers, and parents that were included in all of this. Um, I wanna start with our vision and mission. Our vision, we actually haven't changed that much since the school opened, we believe in this, and we wanted to keep it. So, this is, to sustain a culture intentionally focused on learning, collaboration, and results. And then, our mission, which drives all of this, is we are intentional about high levels of learning for all students. And our core beliefs, um, have tweaked a little bit, but we believe that all students can learn at high levels. We must take collective ownership for all students in order for them to reach their potential, and in collaborating with each other as one PLC, breaking apart into PLTs, so that instruction is standards-based, responsive, and student-centered. A quick overview of our demographics, um, it's a good reminder that we do have some diversity in there, but, um, we're focused on all learners here. Our ADM, um, it can shift a lot, I mean, we're a military-connected school, um, and it's already shifted a little bit from that number, um, and it'll probably shift throughout the school year. So, just a quick overview of what our numbers look like, and this is what drives our, um, focus on students. So, this is our school overall, uh, grade level performance, this is just, um, a brief overview of how grades, all the grades together performed, um, with eighty-one percent performing at or above grade level proficiency. And then, this slide talks a little bit about the breakdown between reading and math. Um, our reading was at seventy-seven point two percent, our math is where we continue to shine, um, with eighty-six point six proficiency. This next slide is our science, um, performance, our GLP for our science. And as you guys have heard probably several ti- several times, we have, um, changed the standards a bit, so, um, we're pretty proud of our seventy-six point four percent proficiency. Some data that could be missing is because it's only our fifth graders, so we didn't have enough of that, uh, subgroup to show, uh, towards our proficiency. But we're really proud of that one, we're gonna continue to grow there. This next slide talks about the, um, breakdown of our growth and our school performance grade. That was one focus that we had with our school improvement team, um, that we did not meet growth this year. We, as you guys saw in our previous slide, we have high proficiency rates. That's difficult, um, to, and challenging to raise the growth. Doesn't mean we're not going to, and it's our big plan that you'll see ahead, um, the next couple of slides, on how we're going to exceed growth, is what we're, our goal is for the next, um, two years. Um, to get there, we're gonna talk about our first goal, this one is focusing specifically on grade level proficiency again. So, overall, we would like to raise our, um, proficiency by five percentage points, so going from eighty-one percent proficient to eighty-six percent. And then, specifically in reading, we wanna go from seventy-seven point two percent to eighty-two point two percent. Science from seventy-six point four to eighty-one point four, and then we wanna increase that math from eighty-six point six, um, to at or above ninety percent proficiency. To get there, these are some of our action steps that we have in place. We have a grade intervention block for each grade level, um, it's at different times of the day, just based off of our master calendar. But within these groups, we have, uh, students that need support, receive targeted help through small groups, our interventions, um, teachers will progress monitor that, with aiming for seventy percent, uh, growth in reading and math. Our other big focus is our students, as you saw, is we have a high proficiency rate. As our students who are at or above grade level will receive that extension and enrichment during this time as well, through differentiated tasks during core instruction, um, and then during that intervention block, some extensions. And then, with higher level challenges. So, those we progress monitored as well quarterly, through assessments with I-ready, uh, in-class assessments, we just took our check-ins, um, and then eighty percent will show growth, uh, while maintaining that exceeding proficiency rate. One way to get there is through our students', um, student, uh, self-efficacy, and so, we have data folders that each student is in charge of, they're gonna progress monitor their own, uh, I-ready data in reading and in math, along with their check-in data, um, and any other classroom assessments that the teachers wanna put in there. And those will be progress monitored, uh, quarterly with their teachers, with one-on-one conversations. They're also gonna set some personal goals within that. Our second goal focuses specifically on growth. We wanna take that, uh, negative four point five two to exceeding growth to positive two point zero one. To get to that, we have very similar action steps, actually. We're gonna focus in on those students who are below grade level, they're gonna receive that targeted intervention, and you need to see our intervention block, guys, it is amazing. To see our TAs who are trained in phonics groups, they come out and they pull our students, um, all throughout the day to target those interventions, the kids are excited to be there, and it's progress monitored bi-weekly or monthly, depending upon, uh, where they are. And then, students who are at or above grade level will engage in enrichment extension tasks during their core instruction, but also during that intervention block. And then, this part is awesome, it's our grade level teams, and this is what the McDee's way is. We come together as a PLC quite often anyways, but we're gonna have specific data meetings to track these, um, intervention groups, whether they're extension or, um, intervention, every six to eight weeks, and we're gonna adjust our groupings, um, and instruction based off of that. And then, last, again, we talked about the data folders already for students, but it's, it's so, so important for student growth. So, they're going to be tracking their I-ready reading and math each marking period, and then those data talks with the teachers are, are vital to them, um, understanding their data and growing. And our last goal has a little bit of a shift, this is really focusing in on our staff. Um, in order for our students to have positive outcomes, our teachers need to also have positive outcomes. And so, we wanted, as a school improvement team, to, um, raise two specific spots in our teacher working condition survey by ten percentage points. The first one is to, um, we want our staff to feel comfortable raising concerns, we wanna increase that from seventy-eight point two six to eighty-eight point two six. And, um, this is coming to school leadership, and what we have to understand, that school leadership is not just administration, it's our, we believe that everyone's a school leader, um, whether it is the, the grade level chair, whether it is our school improvement team members, but feeling comfortable to go to those for advice, for help, maybe that intervention's not working, who do we go to? And then, the second part is report receiving observation feedback with specific steps to improve instruction, increasing that from seventy-six point three two percent to eighty-six point three two percent. What I love about this one is, um, giving them that actual feedback, we have phenomenal teachers at McDee's Creek. We are the, we are high achieving, and they still deserve to grow in their profession. So, providing them a next step, how do we, how do we make that even better? We will be measuring that this year with the teacher working condition survey, but we're also be, uh, we'll be doing dipstick surveys throughout the year, we have one planned in, um, I think, November already. And then, to do that, some of our action steps, our school improvement team will take ownership with this, and will create a monthly PD plan, using the walkthrough trends based off of, um, admin walkthroughs, student data, and then the staff needs that they report to their, um, school improvement team leadership, and then to provide target support for that, um, improvement. And then, this part is my favorite, 'cause I love watching teachers teach, it's probably the best part of my job, but, um, teachers should also get to see how teachers perform, so we will be doing teaching studies to analyze instruction. What teaching studies is, they get to go and they watch our phenomenal teachers that are already doing phenomenal stuff in the classroom, and bring that back to their, um, their own classrooms. But they'll also be talking about that in their school improvement team, or I'm sorry, their PLTs, with their grade levels, say, hey, I saw this, what do you guys think of that? Which is what a PLC should be. Other than that, we're focusing a lot on student growth, on teacher growth, and just growing our community, as you can see all of it, so I'm open up for questions, I'm so happy to be here, and listen, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Bruno, you wanna start? Okay?
Um, first of all, I absolut- uh, Mackenzie, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mackenzie, um, I love what you're doing, that you're having teachers go into other classrooms. Oh, that, the, that's the way to learn, I learn from other people, that's how, that's how I do it. So, I, I think that that's an excellent, excellent idea. The other thing that, uh, this, this gives me a little bit of concern. The percentage of teachers who feel comfortable raising concerns will increase from seventy-eight to eighty-eight? Why do they feel uncomfortable raising concerns?
And you know that, sometimes that's just clarity on what that question asks, because they should be able to go to their, um, to their grade level leads, to their school improvement team, and to administration. We don't really know why, and it could've just been, um, this is the clarity on that question, so, um, yeah, but that's not okay with me either.
Okay, um, yeah, because, uh, I'm a very big believer that teachers should always be, that you, that we need to take care of our teachers.
Hundred percent.
And somebody always needs to be behind them. So, it, does this also mean, like, if, like, it says, improve instruction, but does it also mean behavior in classrooms, that they're afraid to go for help?
Oh, yeah, I didn't cover it with all of it, so-
It does.
And we're already making some shifts too, so, um, teachers know, we just actually had a professional development on behavior, how do we address behavior, what do you need in the classroom? And we looked over trends on educator handbook, and just to see what is, is that they specifically need, um, and how to address that. And so, grade levels got together to say, what was, you know, what is it appropriate behavior for fifth grade versus kindergarten, 'cause it's gonna vary.
Of course.
And then, how we're gonna teach that behavior, 'cause kids have to be taught how to behave as well.
Okay.
But giving them that, that voice to come and talk to whoever it is, whether it is a behavior problem, whether it is an academic problem, um, that was our main goal.
Okay, that should be a hundred percent. I, I just believe that our teachers need support, that's all. But otherwise, great job.
Mr. Johnson, you want to go?
Sure, yeah, so, um, what is your current enrollment number-ish?
So, we're at, I have to, I'm glad you asked that, six hundred and ninety-four.
Six ninety-four, okay.
Yeah, just a little bit down from last year.
And does that include blended, or is that not?
It does not, that is McDee's.
Gotcha.
Blended is, uh, separate from us.
Okay.
It does not include our daycare, Baby Bulls Academy, yes.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but do you have a general idea of what the blended number of students is currently?
Oh, that would be a great question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I knew she'd have to come all the way over.
She'll come up, anyway.
At McDee's, it's about thirty, give or take.
Okay.
Um, and that's across K-five.
Yep, got it, okay. Yeah, just important to, that's just important to frame, 'cause our capacity is eight hundred, right? At McDee's Creek Elementary. And then, this is a related question, approximately, how many students with disabilities do you have? Um, as I was looking through the data, there's some noise there, so I'm assuming that it's a fairly low actual number.
And it varies too, just because there's either, because we're military transient, and we, um, also have, we exit students as well.
Right.
Do I, do you have the exact number, Kate?
See, I always hate to ask that, so I'm, anyway, I'm, well, I was assuming- So I'm, anyway, I'm, well, I was assuming because there is some noise in that data that it's a lower number total because that's usually what you see. So I'm, I'm going to assume that, and then I'll just let Kate holler if I'm wrong. I love the idea of your teaching studies and having teachers visit teachers. I love that idea. Watching teachers, great teachers work. One thing that I would encourage is because we have so many great teachers at McDee's and other places, you know, what are, what are ways that we could record some of this? I know we've used these devices before in classrooms. I forget what they're called now. You hook an iPad into it and it does a.
A swivel.
Swivel, thank you. Taking me back. Yeah, so, so that kind of capturing of that kind of best practices, I would love to see more of that because, as we heard yesterday, you know, up at Elise, it's very difficult for them to get PD for their teachers because geographically, we can't, we can't do that kind of teaching study. And so, anyway, I just think that's a great idea, and I love that you're doing it, and I would love to see how we could spread that. So, and also, I noted that I love cultural goals in school improvement plans. I did watch, and I, Tim noted yesterday that goals are developed based on needs, so I'm proud of you guys for identifying that need. And I just love to see that kind of thing, how are we taking care of our people in our plan? So, oh.
She got me a number.
Of course she did. I'm sorry.
It's fifty-nine, yeah, fifty-nine, and it includes speech, but only, includes speech only?
It includes speech.
Okay.
Includes speech, okay. Thank you. That's perfect. That's all I had. Thank you for you and your staff and everything you guys are doing.
Thanks.
Savi, I just want to commend you on your "all" word because I see it all throughout your goals and your action steps. All students needing support, and you're thinking about, you know, those that need extra help, but all those that need to grow as well with your intervention blocks and your quarterly. The, just want to give you a high five on your data folders, your student-led conferences, and that the students are going to set their personal goals. I want to just reiterate that that is a powerful tool to build future leaders, and you're doing that. I want to give, you know, kudos to your goal, to action steps with your involving everybody in the process for your targeted intervention, as you mentioned, your instructional assistance and working with that phonics, you know, having that training there, the letters training, and then making sure that we're implementing that great research-based process and instruction. Your grade level teams, that you're tracking your interventions, that, you know, that's very interesting to me, and that is going to take some extra time and effort. So I, I really appreciate that. I know you're using iReady. Is there anything else that we don't know about that, how you're going to track those interventions?
So we have a school-wide data tracker as well and the teachers input, so we can pull up the entire school. Each grade level has their own, and they have their own, they have CFAs in there, they have their phonics divided down by the dibbles. They have it all. It's amazing, the systems and processes that they have in place. And just their knowledge of where each student is. You can ask a teacher going in a classroom, how's so-and-so doing, and they will tell you spot on, like, what they need, how they're going to get there.
I mean, that is big time. That is big time work, and just very, very impressive. And then the last thing I want to say is that what you said, teachers deserve to grow, and you're doing that, and you're involving them, and, you know, our board members are recognizing that as well. So thank you for that effort. That's going to help us recruit and retain our best and brightest. So yes, the idea of replicating that across our school district is powerful, so thank you for that.
Ms. Finway.
It's not much of anything else to add, other than thank you for what you're doing. We're excited for you. Are you fully staffed right this moment?
We are.
We are?
Yes, it's a dream.
Good, that's good. I keep hearing, I keep hearing that. It's a good thing.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Ms. Finway.
Yeah. Hi, Ms. Savi.
Hey.
Whenever I think of McDee's Creek, the first thing that comes to mind is your PLT room. And it's like walking into Skunk Works there, the Boeing think tank. Literally, no kid can hide. Every kid has a status.
Yeah.
That status is tracked daily. And the best thing of all, when there's problems, you task organize teachers to fix that problem, and you allocate the time to do it. That's an ideal situation, it really is. I know you were part of that, so.
It's phenomenal. I mean, we have the best problem-solving team, our MTSS process at McDee's Creek. I mean, it's a model school for that, and the people that are involved in it, and I would love to take credit, but I absolutely, I jumped in and was like, yes, yes, we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah. You know it when you see it, right?
And it's phenomenal, so it's, it's the leadership within that school, for sure.
Great, keep it up. I'd be interested how, how you, you control kindergartners to track their progress in folders.
So they do it, those teachers. I mean, it is very student, or teacher-led right now with our kindergartners, but they show them the day, they show them where they are. M-Class is a great tool for our kids to see, okay, colors are essential, to see that either I'm red, yellow, blue, green, or green-blue, and letting them see where they're, where they're wanting to go. So our teachers do it. You've got to come see our kindergartners. I'm impressed.
Okay, we will.
Yes.
We will. In, in terms of professional development, I'm just going to throw a, a notion out there that I think we ought to have a system of paid sabbaticals for top performers as part of that professional development track. One day, we ought to take a look at that, put our heads together, and maybe get some, some local deep pockets to fund it. Who knows? That's all I've got. Thanks so much for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Savi.
Thank you, Ms. Savi.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for joining us this morning. Mrs. McPherson? Whenever you're ready.
Okay. Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So good morning, everyone. I think it's still morning.
Yes, still morning.
Okay. So I'm Julie McPherson, the proud principal at Sand Hills Farm Life. I just wanted to take a minute to thank, thank you guys for all of your support and what you do for us. I just find it just an honor and a privilege to be the principal at Farm Life. It's such a, a unique little community with just a long, you know, tradition of academic excellence, and it is just a blessing for me. So thank you for that. So I will get started. I guess I'm doing the, okay. All right. So our vision is to cultivate a desire to learn and help all children reach their full potential. So we changed the word, we actually updated this this summer, and we changed the word foster to cultivate. And when that kind of hits somebody on our team, we're like, yes, Farm Life, we're going to cultivate.
Oh, there you go.
So we did that, and we say this every morning on the morning announcements, and the students even know what it is. I have two students that help me every morning, and they come up and do the pledge in the moment of silence and the birthdays, but when we say this, I say cultivate a desire to learn and help all children reach there, and the whole school says, full potential. So they know, they know what it is.
Oh, wonderful.
And they, they, they buy into it, too.
Wonderful.
So our mission, again, we changed the word cultivate there, too. We love that word, but that changed a little bit. But what we did with the core beliefs, Trojans Lead the Way, we did update, update those a little bit as well, just to make sure it aligned really well to the Moore County Strategic Plan. So that was updated this summer. So these are our demographics. Of course, this is last year's demographics, and I just, we just received a new student this morning, and we hit four hundred. We were at three ninety-nine for a couple of days, and then we hit four hundred this morning. So that's a little, we have about twenty students more this year than we did last year. All right, our GLP performance, you can kind of see the trends there. One thing I did want to point out is we've been focusing the last couple of years with our students with disabilities. So we have steadily increased that a little bit, but we've tried to, you know, put our focus there. One thing we did notice this summer at our school improvement team meeting was that our economically disadvantaged students went down. Of course, we don't, don't know who those students are, per se, but when we talked about it, we went back to our vision of all students, and of course, that includes them as well. So we, we're just doing what we do for all students, for, for them as well. Point that out. And then when you look at it by content, you can see there was a big jump last year with our students with disability in reading, went from eighteen point five to twenty-six point five, so that was a big acceleration for us. And then if you look at the math one, again, our students with disabilities went up about five points. But then, of course, when you look back with the economically disadvantage, you can see, see the downward trend there. Science, science was a re norming year, of course, last year. We had typically been in the nineties. The last couple of years went down ten points at eighty-one. We just hopefully chop that up to the re-norming year, and we'll jump right back up pretty quickly. I have two very strong fifth grade science teachers, so I'm excited about that. Okay, you can see our growth measures, two years of expected growth and then two years exceeding growth. We're very proud of that. Consistently been a B-school for the last three years, up from, from a C-school prior to that. All right, so getting into the, the meat of this, our goal, we have just one big overarching goal because we feel like, again, this encompasses everything with our school. So our goal is to increase our overall GLP by five percentage points each year from a seventy-three point four to an eighty point nine. And we're going to do that basically two ways. We're going to demonstrate that growth in all the subgroups by fully implementing that collaborative team process, which is our PLT process, and then working through our multi-tiered system of support framework. And then, of course, it breaks it down by grade level. Every, you know, after two years, what we hope to hit by grade level. And you can also see students with disabilities we have on our performance indicators as well, closing that gap. All right, so our action steps. We are really working to improve and refine our PLC process. And we've been really honing in on the PLC process since I've been there. This is my sixth year there. I've taken a group to Charlotte to the PLC conference. We went for the third time last summer. So just really getting different pockets of teachers trained. What we really need to focus on this year, and we actually, I was doing some of that when I got the call to come on in early because they were ahead of schedule. I was meeting with our first grade PLT, and we were examining their first common assessment. So they had brought their, their math common assessment. They were using the Eureka Common Assessment for Module One. We, we looked at a high student, some low students, and some medium students, and just looking at the different levels and what they were doing. I had just met, before first grade, I met with kindergarten, and they had brought their common assessment for their writing samples. So looking at what a high kindergarten writing would look like, what a low kindergarten writing would look like. So that's one of our goals, is to, let's look at those common assessments, see if we're assessing them similarly. If you've got four teachers on a grade level, are they using the same standards, you know, to measure what they're looking for? And we were, it was just amazing, the conversations we had this morning were just amazing. I did it with second grade as well. They brought in a reading, one of their reading CFAs, and they were looking through those. So those are the kinds of things we're working on this year, is looking at those common assessments, making sure they're rigorous, making sure they're aligned to the standards, and making sure that we are assessing the same way. So that's our, our first action step. Our second one is creating a vertical writing plan. So again, we know that research shows that writing can improve comprehension. So we are committed to, we kind of dabbled into it last year, getting this started. So we're committing this year to having a grade level writing plan, so each grade level will have a writing plan, and then we're looking at it vertically, too, so that if a child is in second grade, they go to third grade, then the third grade teachers are going to know what they should have gotten in second grade. So we actually started that a couple of weeks ago, the October thirteenth PD day that we had, we, we started that. I'm very excited that we now have an MCL, a multi, multi-classroom leader. So that is one thing I've been wanting ever since I've been at Farm Life, is that instructional person, and she is amazing. So she led that process a couple of weeks ago, have, starting that writing plan. She met with K-one together, two, three together, four, five together, to start looking at where each grade level, what they do in writing, and then plugging in to make sure we're covering it all. So that's, that's the second step. And then math fluency. I mean, we all know, if you don't know your math facts, you're not going to do well later.
Exactly.
You know, fifth grade is working on fractions and multiplying, dividing, and decimals, and, you know, but if you don't know those math facts, you know, that's going to be hard. So we did purchase the program called Reflex Math, and it is a, it's a, it's a fun, the kids love it. It's fun because it's kind of like a gaming thing, but they're doing their math facts, and students are starting to test out of it. So teachers send me their names when they, when they test out, then I give them a shout out on the morning announcements. Of course, they think that's great, and we've got a big bulletin board where they put their little certificate up there and everything, so. So that, that program is two through five, and then K-one also has a little fluency program that they're using. So that's kind of like our PLC goal there. So then our next one is the MTSS goal. So we have, every day, we have what we call WIN time, W-I-N, what I need. And that is our intervention block. It's a different time for each grade level so that people can be pulled for whether they're getting their EC services, whether they're getting their AIG services, if they need to be in a tier, a tiered group, they can do it at that time. So what we're trying to do here is to make sure we're just being consistent, making sure that we're aligning what they need to core, to their core instruction, and then going from there. If they're not getting something in core instruction, if we re-taught it, they're still not getting it, then they may be put into a tier-two group to make sure that they get it before, before they get too far behind. So that's one thing we're working on, just, again, just, just refining those processes. We've got them there, it's just making sure we're doing them to fidelity and to the way it needs to be done. We also met on October thirteenth, we actually had a rotation. So one of the rotations was working with our NCL on the writing. And another rotation that we had was an EC vertical planning time, where we had time for the grade levels to meet with our EC staff, because it's hard for them to meet with the EC staff because they're so busy pulling kids all day long. So, and that was one thing that we had heard, is we need to talk to the EC teachers, you know? So that was a really good, a good session, too. They got a lot of value out of that. And then just making sure that we have, we have several students that are on a supplemental, a tier-two behavior, whether it's a check-in, check-out, small groups, like a mentor-type thing. So we're, we've created a tracking sheet for that, just to make sure that we're keeping track of the progress they're making, or their educator handbook, incidence is going down, they're going up. We just needed to have that in a, a better place. We're working on that. And then making sure that we have a tier-three behavior plan in place. You know, of course, we do house the behavior separate classroom for the district, for elementary. So we have that at Farm Life, and those students, you know, of course, are already in EC program, but if we have regular ed students who may need tier-three, which we don't have that many, but, you know, you can get it. So we just wanted to make sure we have a good process for that, too. So that's that one. And then, of course, you know, making sure our culture stays healthy. We, like I said, we updated our mission, vision, and core beliefs, sharing shout-outs at staff meetings. We do good news before our PLT meetings start, you know, just making sure we're celebrating things that are going on. We are still doing our energy buzz. We are a certified energy buzz school. We're excited about that. We had a big kickoff assembly a couple of weeks ago. Union Pond's High School Drum Line came and performed, and it was just, it was just awesome. We had a student-teacher contest to see who would win. We did it on the front lawn and kicked off our energy bus for the year, so that was a lot of fun. We also, one thing we've done this year to kind of supplement that, John Gordon wrote the energy bus. I'm not sure if you're familiar with him or not. But he also wrote a book called One Word. And One Word is something I've always, I've done since I've been at Farm Life with the staff. So every year, the teachers pick out a word to focus on for the year. Well, this year, we decided that we would have the students get involved with that as well.
Right.
So all the students picked out their word for the year. And we've got a big, when you come into the main area and you walk up the ramp to the building part of it, we've got a big display with the words and everything on it. So we're excited about that. So just sharing that positive energy, you know, with the staff, the students, and the families, is what that's all about. And then, of course, we'll do a dipstick survey this fall to see where we are, to get ready for the teacher working condition survey in the spring. So that's our plan.
All right, I can't wait. What's the word? What word did the students choose?
Well, they picked their own word.
Okay.
Yeah, so everybody's got their own word.
Oh, each person has their own word.
Each person has their own word, right.
So now, I've got to go see.
Yes.
What it is, what their words are.
But what's your word this year?
So my word this year is empower. Because I'm trying to, I want to empower the staff, the students, and even, I just think at home, you know, my three sons are living everywhere but here. And just what I can do to make sure that I still be a good mom, and I'm grandma now, and, you know, just empower whoever I come across.
I have to.
Yes, ma'am.
Julie, first of all, you are absolutely amazing. I'd love to come to your school. You do such a wonderful job. I love everything that you do. I loved your action goals or your action steps. Most action steps are words. I hate that. This is write-down, basic, what you're doing. I absolutely love these. Create a vertical writing plan, and you're so right. If kids write, they remember. It is so true. That's how I studied. I talked out loud and I wrote it down. And that's how I learned. I just thought this was terrific. Also, your math fluency. What could be more important than to redo it and do it and do it and do it, and you remember it your whole entire life? This is basic learning. It's absolutely terrific.
Thank you.
Really, really good. Did you ever do your all-school reading again?
Yes, yes.
You did?
Well, we did. We did one last year, too.
What did you do last year?
We did The Mouse and the Motorcycle.
Oh, I haven't read that. The Mountain?
Yeah, it's a classic.
The what?
Beverly Clarion.
Oh, The Mouse?
The Mouse and the Motorcycle, right.
How did that work?
It went great. Because we were going along our theme of enjoy the ride with our energy bus. So, you know, Ralph would get his motorcycle.
Okay. Okay, so are you, you did, so you did Charlotte's Web, you did The Mouse and the Mountain, and?
Mouse and the Motorcycle.
Why do I keep saying Mountain? Okay, The Mouse and the Motorcycle, what are you doing?
Well, it's kind of a surprise.
Oh. You don't have to tell me. I just think that, I think that that's one of the greatest things to do and...
We love it.
Yeah. I don't understand why nobody else does that. I think that's a...
I think a couple of schools do.
Oh, do they?
Yes, they do.
I just think that's a phenomenal thing to do. What I wanted to ask you, it says about the PLCs consistently following the four questions of a PLC.
Right.
Could you give me the four questions?
Sure. What do we want our students to know?
Okay.
So that's looking at the standards, making sure we're unpacking them. What are we, how are we going to know if they know it? How are we going to know if they learn it? So that's looking at the common assessments, you know, creating those common assessments. What do we do if they don't learn it? And that's that WIN time.
Okay.
You know, where we split them up into groups. And then, what do we do when they do learn it?
Okay.
So, and providing that enrichment opportunity.
And your, what I need, the WIN, WIN, that's amazing. That is really good. If there's anybody that can empower a staff and students, it's you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You've done a great job. I am really impressed with you.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Yes, ma'am. Got a great culture going there at Farm Life.
We work hard on it, yes.
I like the way you sustain it. Really good stuff.
Thank you.
I'm interested in Reflex Math.
Okay.
And we say we test kids out of that process. How long is that typically?
Well, it depends on the grade level. I've got some fifth graders who've already, have mastered their multiplication and division facts. And then, a couple of fourth graders, too, that have already done that. So it just, I mean, and we just started, what is it, October twenty-second? It just depends on, you know, how hard they're working on it.
Sure. How many kids roughly involved in that?
It's second through fifth grade, so...
No.
We got four hundred.
Wasn't a trick question. I was just curious.
About sixty-five per grade, so about two, fifteen maybe.
Okay. Significant number. Good. Ashley Chacon at the Innovative High School cited problems with problem solving in general, kids not understanding how to go about problem solving.
Right.
Ultimately, we're after people who can solve problems to have a good life as a result, I guess, at the end of this.
Right, right.
Do we have a incremental common, continuous thread of problem-solving skills that we build up versus you, the kids you get from elementary school?
Right.
What's their status in terms of their ability to employ problem solving?
Well, I know one thing we do teach them with math problem solving is that UPS check strategy. Have you heard of that strategy?
Probably don't, no.
And Donna, help me if I'm, okay? But it's where you take a math problem, and you, the U is understand. So what in the problem is it that we need to understand? Okay? And the P is the problem. So then, what is the problem? What's the question asking? UPS is solving it, then you solve it, and then you check it. So that's kind of like, did I get it?
Yeah, okay.
So that's the strategy we teach them, you know, to work through as they're working through these problems.
How about word problems?
Right, that's word problems.
Okay, it is word problems, okay.
That's what I'm talking about.
Great. And how do you find the incoming elementary school kids in terms of their ability to do that?
Well, I mean, you know, it just, it varies. We have a very transient population at Farm Life. So again, you know, we, one thing we looked at when we did our first Trojan Talks a couple of weeks ago was how many of the students that we are finding that need a tiered intervention are new students, you know? And in one grade level, it was almost half of them are brand-new to us, that, you know, we haven't had a chance, and this was like second grade, so we haven't had a chance to work with them yet. So it just depends.
Most of your transient kids military?
About fifty percent, fifty-one percent. That was last year's stat, but, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Can't let Mr. Johnson go before me. He's still saw the thunder.
We'll go around to this time.
The two things I wrote, the student involvement, where they're taking ownership, were the words that I wrote. So when you said that your word is empowerment, it fit, because that's exactly what you're doing, is you're empowering the students. But I do want to know, I've asked everybody else if you're fully staff this year.
Okay.
Are you, have you met your staffing needs?
Well, I'm still needing one fifth-grade teacher. I had one to resign suddenly.
Okay.
So I had three, and then with that position, I just haven't been able to fill it yet.
Okay.
We've had several interviews, and I have two very strong fifth-grade teachers. And I'm not just going to put anybody in there.
Sure.
Because I want to make sure that person fits the culture and fits what we're looking for.
Okay.
So I still have that one position.
Okay, thank you for that.
But other than that, I'm good.
Okay, well, that, I was going to say, this is your WIN moment, this is your what I need moment, so if there's something that the board can help you with, let us know how we can help you. Thank you for what you're doing.
I just want to reiterate that you're listening to your teachers, and you're involving your teachers, and your community, and your students, and so that's powerful, and that you're focusing on PLCs for your teachers, your MTSS, involving everyone to make sure every need is met, and you're tracking it. And then, just the energy bus, the energy is powerful, and I always love visiting your school, and I look forward to seeing you again. Thank you for everything you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Just to reiterate all that, thank you for everything you guys are doing. Farm Life is a great school. You said you're at four hundred as of this morning. You also mentioned enjoying doing things on your front lawn, and I think those things are connected.
Well, when we go in the gym, it's so loud, and with the drum line coming, I was like, we are not going in the gym with the drum line.
Right, well, I was just, I was just overwhelmed with joy to see the trailers be removed from your front lawn. And I know that that's concerning to us, and, you know, our job to help keep that front lawn a front lawn.
Yes, please, thank you.
So I just want to say that. I love the writing process. I mean, I loved your focus on writing. When we went to visit, we saw that evidenced in multiple classrooms just randomly on a morning. So that was great. A question I had was, what prompted you to develop that focus on writing? Was it something you saw in students, was it something personally, or?
I just, I think after, you know, talking some with Donna, two years ago, I met with her over the summer, and it's like, where can we go next? You know, when you, when you get to that certain level, you know, you've got to focus on those students that are lower, you know, you've got to do all that, but what else can we do? And she introduced me to the Writing Revolution book, and I know Pine Hurst had used that book as well. So then, when I read through that, looking through that, and talking more with Donna about it, I was like, yes, that's the direction we need to go in next.
Great, well, I love that. And the other question I have is, you know, some schools have these programs that they do, and they start to do really well. Do you feel like you have good opportunities to share that with colleagues? Because I know that that's really valuable, and probably through Donna or other ways, but like the math fluency program you have, you know, once you've got report outs and you know that it's working, do you feel like there's a good process to share with your colleagues?
Well, we do, at our monthly leadership meetings, we do have PLC time, you know, that I can share that with. And I'm pretty sure, Donna, that Brandy has shared that program, yeah, with everybody too.
That's great.
That's how we knew about it, was Brandy, all red, math specialist, yeah.
Excellent. And that was really it. So just thank you for everything you're doing, and let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah. Julie, I just ordered The Mouse and the Motorcycle. Anyway, when you decide what your school...
If you want to go out there, I'll whisper it to you.
No, just email me, okay? Would you just, because I really like to stay up with what everybody's reading, okay?
And we'll invite you again to come and do a question of the day.
I would love that. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. McPherson.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
And at this time, let's take a lunch break from twelve to twelve-thirty. We'll come back, yeah, we'll come back at twelve-thirty. Thank you.
Katie's next. I love her.
We start to...[1393.23]
Katie's next.
Okay, we're resuming our school improvement presentations and we're excited to see Dr. Bennett here from Bass Lakeview Elementary School. Welcome.
Got it, Red? Um, thank you for letting me present our school improvement plan today. Um, I'm just gonna start off with um our vision, mission, and core beliefs. Um, we um, we tweaked it maybe a little bit, but we always, we took it, our sit team had a retreat. Um, we talked about it there, we discussed with parents, the community. Um, and so it, we just wanted to make sure that it really supports the strategic plan that um for more county schools. And we're very excited, we still do old fashioned announcements in the morning. And so our kids come up, um, they do by grade levels, and so the last thing we say on the announcements every day is, um, we're leaders today and learners tomorrow. So, um, yeah, learners today, leaders tomorrow. You know what I meant. Yeah, and so they get very excited about that, so it just kinda starts off the day that way. Um, the next slide, um, those are our demographics um for last year. Um, it's pretty much the same, I think we might be around five thirty. We've just got five new students this week. Between last week and this week, and got two more coming, so, yeah, yeah. Um, we're, and not all of them are military, so we did a, we got a big influx last year too, like in January. We got like twenty kids all of a sudden, so um, it's just a mixture, they're not all military. Um, then we can look at our um grade level proficiency from last year. And um, I mean, all the, like, we came up in almost all the areas, we increased our grade level proficiency. Um, overall for, you know, for sixty-seven, so that came up. It, I'm very proud of our students with disabilities. Um, that almost doubled in grade level proficiency. Um, and that's um about forty-five kids that we're talking about. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, we're very proud of that. Um, also our, they just, they just are all increased. Our African-American students went down just a touch, but um, yeah, we're just very proud of that. Also, this breaks it up into reading and math. Um, and once again, you can um see our student with disabilities um really increased, they grew. Um, or we have more proficient, also with the um economically disadvantaged students, um, that went up. So, and then in math. I wish our third graders were, well, our, our third graders really rocked last year. Um, we were like eighty-three percent proficient and um, yeah, 'cause our, we did Eureka. So, we're very excited about Eureka. Um, our science, I know um, a lot of people, you know, have, have talked about it was re-normed. Um, we have one fifth grade science teacher, and she is phenomenal. And she just took the new curriculum and she just went with it, and she listened to Donna's group, and she researched stuff, and she, she just is phenomenal, and she was worried all year long, I'm like, no, good teaching, you're gonna, it's gonna be fine. And so we dropped just a tad, but we're, we're eighty-one point six proficient, so um, yeah, that was, we're very, yeah, she's very, very happy. So, um, yeah. If you ever get a chance, you can come see her, or see her teach. And then um ninety percent for our Hispanic students, um proficient in science, which is huge. Forgetting to flip my little paper. Um, so um, this is our, um, our grade level proficiency is increasing. Um, as you can see, we have not met growth for two years, so we have embraced that. Um, we've talked a lot as a school, not just the sit team, but I mean, leadership team, and all of our other teams, just as a school as a whole. And identified some, you know, areas that we need to target. And so, once we get to the goals and the action steps, it'll kinda show, you know, where we're gonna, just, we've just embraced it. So our first goal is a grade level proficiency, and um, it's very, you know, similar to the other um goals. We want to increase ten percent over the two years, so five percent by the end of this school year. Okay, so our, um, to support that goal, um, enhance core and differentiated instruction. Um, we've really just tightened up on um the magnetic reading for third, fourth, and fifth grade. Um, there's lots of writing in there, there's just, it's just a great program, so our teachers have really embraced it. Um, and so, that's, I mean, what we're using for our core instruction, and also I mentioned Eureka. We are doing Eureka squared, school-wide, so every grade level is doing it. We've been doing it for second grade, our fourth grader's coming in now, this will be their third year with Eureka. Yep. Um, we're taking, we meet each month as a principal team, as a leadership team, and so we're just taking all those ideas. Um, not too long ago, um, Rachel Burris talked about, we did something with our North Star that just really hit home. And so, I think that all the things we do at leadership, learning focus, PLCs, you know, the four-question way, all those things, that is our North Star. And so, we put all those things together, we're just gonna, we're gonna get to that, stay focused. Um, the PD, the district is providing PD, so I'm really encouraging, I'm highly encouraging, you know, the teachers that they're going to that, but, it's, they've seen a real benefit from it too. I said, just, you know, let's go this one time, they said, but if it's, if it's not good, we're not gonna go back, but they loved it. And they've come back with lots of positive feedback about that, because I think it's given them time to plan, and not just sit and get something, but they have plan, they have time to plan, and they can ask questions around the district to the other grade level, 'cause it's by grade level, yeah, it's really, really good. Oh, professional development, I'm sorry. Yeah. Um, we've also, um, Kate's been really great to come in and meet with me and Stephanie, my assistant principal, you know, to look at EVOs, 'cause that, I mean, that's one of the things, we're really studying EVOs, and, 'cause, you know, we want to meet growth. Um, and so, we're just tightening up on things. And then that leads us to our next growth, I mean, our next goal. Um, and that's our growth goal, so the, you know, of course, when we did our sit plan all in the beginning, we didn't, we didn't really know that, but so we came back and we've added this goal. And so our goal is just to, to meet growth, and actually to get to positive growth in the two years. Um, the way we're gonna do this, um, we've um used some of our Title I money um to buy some people, some more people. Um, so we're using those as tutors, and they're targeting like tier-two and tier-three students. Um, and we also use additional staff members with those students too. We, our instructional assistants are phenomenal, they've been letters-trained, they, sometimes you go in the room, you don't know the difference between the instructional assistant and the teacher. And so, um, we use them to go, and they are helping with third, fourth, and fifth grade in the mornings during our flex time. That's a, a flexible plan. So, yeah. Um, we're just looking at all kinds of data, the Common Formative Assessments. Um, we're talking about data during um PLCs, we're looking at benchmark data, like, you know, M-class, I-ready, all that stuff. Um, we're meeting as a leadership team and like really focusing on the students' my path in our targeted areas, to make sure that these students, since we didn't meet growth, to make sure that we're looking, that they're not just sitting there on a level, just getting straight hundreds, and just sitting there doing it. So, we went through like a whole entire grade level and just bumped them up. Where, yeah, so, 'cause they were, they were just making hundreds over and over, so we want them to grow. 'Cause they've got the proficiency down. Increased consistency with data tracking across all content areas, that's, we have the data notebooks, um, that our kids do. Um, they look at that, um, we, you know, track the data in the spreadsheets and all that kinda stuff, um, and talk about it in PLCs. We also have a very strong instructional support facilitator this year, who is just really, um, she's really, like, just fit in with the culture and the staff at Bass, and so, um, and she's been a great help too. We're also doing a book study, um, sit talked a lot this summer about intrinsic motivation. And I think when we all got on the, I was back in the day when PBIS like was first invented or talked about. And um, I think it just kinda went wonky a little bit, so we started talking about that. And we're reading a book, tackling the motivation crisis, and so, um, we've met as a team, the school improvement team is doing the book. And at the staff, the last staff meeting, we did like a survey with, with the grownups to see what motivates us. Um, and then we got in our groups, and hard, I don't think there was anybody in the group that wants like actual things. Like, you know, tangible things. Most of us want like praise, you know, from your colleagues, or a little card, or a note, um, things like that. Um, and so, and our guidance counselor, our school counselor, she did the, a survey with all the students in the school. And the K-two students, yes, they, you know, they like candy and the prize box and all that kinda stuff. Um, but our three-five students really just wanted their teacher approval. They don't want the pizza party really, or, you know, all that stuff. They love to come eat lunch with us, or lunch with their teacher. Um, they, those are the kinds of things, so we're really focusing as a school on that, um, to intrinsically motivate our kids. Um, we've also, I have some notes. We also have like created a schedule to make sure, I, I think we were, um, I don't wanna say not doing, not doing it right. We were just not as diligent as we should have been with um the M-class monitoring, to make sure the progress monitoring was going on. Um, you know, and have those conversations with teachers, so we've created a schedule for that. So, they follow the schedule, and, and then we're just, we're looking at that, so we've seen that, some improvement. There's so many good things going on at all of our schools, I'm like, I'm listening to the other plans, I'm like, oh, well, we do that. And then I'm like, well, we do that too, you know, we do all these things. I mean, it's just such a great pla, I've lived here my whole life, and it's just such a great place to work. I mean, it's just, you know, I'm just proud to be at more county schools, so.
Dr. Bennett, it's the Moore County Schools way.
It is, it is, yes.
And we're living it, and we're seeing it. Are you ready for?
Good stuff.
Comments?
I am, yes. Comments and questions.
All right, I'm just, I'll just start, since I just, I couldn't stop myself from saying Moore County Schools way. And that's what's, you know, we're seeing success across all of our schools, using our Moore County Schools way, and the framework, and the support, and the leadership that you mentioned. Um, one of my questions was, what did you do differently with your EC students? How, they're showing growth, like, what, do you have a couple of things, and Mr. Waters right, is right behind you to help? Um, what, what efforts are you putting in place, and uh, can you pinpoint anything?
Well, not necessarily you like pinpoint it.
Yeah.
But I do think um our, the relationships that our teachers build with the kids, that they make them feel comfortable, and they're, and they're, our kids are getting more comfortable with like productive struggles. Um, and so, E, our EC kids. And so, our EC kids are, and they're feeling more comfortable. Yeah, that, that's the only thing I can think of.
Neil can?
Okay, yes.
Yeah, he needs to get up.
I got Neil up.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, oh, thanks. This gives me opportunity to just shine a light on a lot of different things that are happening in a lot of our schools, but Farm Life has, at, I'm, sorry, sorry, Vassley is here.
Not a trojan.
I'm below my moment here. An AU classroom that is Gen Ed-based, where our students, they, they're able to kind of come and go, and, and that is a real, we have several schools that have that, but a self-contained classroom as well. Our preschool program is strong there, with, with a heavy EC population there as well, as well as daycare. And then just super-strong, super-strong resource and inclusion teachers. And I think there's, there's some differentiation going on, and I think there's just, there's an acceptance of those students. There, there's, there's a, I mean, it's a, it's a large population, so.
Yeah, yeah, and that's kind of piggyback off what he said. I do think that we go, it's just very important to me that all those students feel loved and welcomed at a school. And so, we volunteered for the AU room. It's, you know, it's had its ups and downs.
There are challenges, yeah.
Yeah, it's challenges, but it is, it really is nice to see. It just makes you all warm and fuzzy when you see those kids go from like, you know, having meltdowns or being in a room all the time, and now they're going out to Gen Ed, and, and they're, it's all inclusive. So I really do think that that, that is part of it, that they just feel comfortable, and they feel wanted and accepted.
They feel loved.
And there's fidelity of programs there, too. I mean, we have, the programs that we offer, they're being used to fidelity there, a lot of our schools. But I just wanted to shine a light on that, give them the opportunity, so, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. Thank you, Neil. It's okay, Julie's my friend.
Mr. Johnson, we'll go to you next, please, sir.
Yeah, so, great job out at VAS. Really appreciate you and all the staff, of course. I did have a couple questions. So you've mentioned the IA is getting trained up in letters-training, and I know that that's been a traditional difficulty of getting our assistants trained because of time and all this type of thing. So I was kind of wondering how you were able to do that, or how the system was able to do that, if that was something that was helped outside, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks to Donna. We piggybacked off with another school. And so, our kindergarten and first-grade assistants went in with the other school, think Pine, Piner? Southern Pines? Southern Pines, we teamed up.
Okay.
And so, yeah, and it, they didn't do both volumes, they did the first one, because, yeah, because that's what it pertained to. And so, yeah, you can come in our class, and they're running core phonics groups, just like the teacher.
Well, I, I love that, and, and I know that you have some instructional assistants that have been there for?
Yes, all of them.
Decades. Which is really a powerful thing to have, when you have IAs that are that qualified and getting trained. And so, I just want to shine a light on that and say thank you for providing that training. And at any time in the future, if there's opportunities for that, I know math curriculum, whatever pieces, I would love to see them trained up as well, and figure out a way to do it, because I know that's a hard problem. The other thing I just want to say is, I love the focus on intrinsic motivation. That is a huge piece, and we haven't really talked about that yesterday or today. And I think that's a huge thing to shine a light on, because asking kids what motivates them, and then have, sharing that with the teachers, and then having the teachers share their, what motivates them with the kids.
Yeah.
Is really cool. What was the book that you were?
Tackling the Motivation Crisis.
Tackling the Motivation Crisis, very cool, very cool. The book I love is called Drive.
Oh, that, well, that, it's right there with Drive.
Right in my favorites, you know, to really tap into it. Yeah, so, keep, keep at it, and thanks for everything you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Michelle, re, really good job. I loved this, the motivation piece, like Steve said, I just think that that's terrific. Can you give me just one example of what the teachers have learned, or what you have learned from that book?
Um, just basically, I mean, going back to the book, Drive, it's just, you're not really wanting like, candy or material things. You're wanting that.
From your heart.
Yeah, like, I'll just put, like, when Dr. Locklear and Jamie send me like, a note, I have all those notes put up.
Oh, yes.
Way more, you know, than somebody, but, well, that, no, they did tell me, we don't want to not ever get a present.
Yes, okay.
They still want some presents. Like, yeah, they still, when they get plenty of that, but they just, really just notes and just, you know, great job, or just tell, being specific. And so, we've also done that, we're doing like, more walkthroughs and just being specific about giving them the feedback. They want that feedback.
Yeah, that, I, I think that this is absolutely excellent, that you've done that. The other thing was you're monitoring your subgroup to ensure growth, that is really good.
Yeah, and we talk about that a lot during MTSS. I mean, I know I didn't mention MTSS, but that, I guess, just because it's just second nature to us.
Right.
Um, I feel like we have a really great MTSS process, and we ha, we have for, for years. And we just, you know, we keep tweaking it and improving it, but we, we really stay on top of that. We meet a leadership team and some other people, what is that thing called, that guided coalition? Yeah. Yeah, I don't even know. We meet, you know, and we're always talking about the kids, attendance, behavior, all that, we're always talking about the whole child. So we have lots of different PLCs going on in the building.
Okay, but the, the motivation part of it is, to me, that's, that's half of the, half, half of it. So, good for you, excellent.
Ask me your question.
Am I the last one? Okay, thank you for all you do. The question I've asked everybody, are you fully staffed this year?
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. I'm loving this.
And that means daycare's staffed, AU is staffed, yes, all areas, we are completely staffed.
Is, is that different from, when, when did that?
No.
Okay.
We, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty alwa, we're always staffed, pretty much. Last year, I mean, we did have an EC position all year long, and so, the two EC teachers, you know, had to take on that extra caseload. And so, yeah, that's even more, makes me more happy that, you know, our EC kids grew. Are more proficient, but, no, we have very low turnover.
Good.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just a good school.
I just, yeah, no, it is a good school, and it has good leadership, and we appreciate you, thank you.
We'd like y'all to visit.
Yeah, we'll be, I'll be, I'll be, we'll be there.
Hi, Ms. Bennett.
Hey.
Yours was the first school I visited.
I know.
On the board.
Yep, we had lunch.
First impressions are lasting, and they've been very much justified. You, you have tremendous community support down there. How do you sustain that? How do you nurture that? Or is it just second, second nature?
I think it is just second nature in my personality. I don't, you know, if they, our Woodlake Women's Club, you know, if they, I'm just very open. The doors open, you know, I, I make my schedule fit when they're, can come. We've met with the Woodlake Women's Club, and, you know, to plan, like, they're doing things for the teachers, like, three, like, food-type things, or treats, or something. I just, I just think it's the open-door policy, I call back quickly, I just like them. I just like the community. Yeah, I like parents, I like, I like all that part of it.
Super. I would be mentioning those, the notes you get there, whatnot, I just, I had a flash in my mind, attaching those notes to Maslow's hierarchy or something, you know?
Yeah.
See where, see where it all lines up, you know? MMPI kind of thing.
Yeah.
Keep up the great work, we'll be down to visit you before long.
All right.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It has, yes.
Okay, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bennett.
Okay, thank you.
Tell everyone hello.
Thank you, Michelle.
I will see you soon.
It's all right.
Hello, Mrs. Lockme, and welcome. It's good to see you.
Keep me straight.
Hi, thank you. It's good to see you. Good to see you. I have to put my glasses on, because, you know, I'm at that age. Lovely. I am Katie Lockme, I'm the proud Warrior Principal at Weston Elementary School, and super excited to come and talk to you about our, our plan that we have for our we Warriors. And I'm not gonna forget to click, but Jamie said that if I forget, she'll click for me. So I want to first just visit our vision and mission. I was here two years ago, and this is our same vision and mission and core beliefs. However, our school improvement team does revisit this every year, make sure it still aligns with where we see our trajectory for our school, and make sure it aligns with the strategic plan for the district. And so, we have done that this past summer, when we did our school improvement team retreat, which they asked me, it's a retreat, but we're at school. I'm like, I know, we're retreating. Wonderful. But in our core beliefs, I do want to just make a couple of notes about some words, and that is, whole child, you'll see that. Strive, we strive relentlessly for the best for all of our students, and all students will succeed. So you'll notice with this, it's a holistic approach, making sure that it's not just about data, it's about the whole child. And we have a motto now that we've adopted, kind of stolen, because we're good educators, from Solution Tree, and that's behind every decision is a child, and we really make sure that that's our lens and our focus. We collaborate between all stakeholders, and we do believe that all students can learn at high levels. So if you'll note our demographics, we are predominantly white, and it's really, when we have smaller subgroups, it's very important to note the actual numbers in those subgroups, because when you get to the testing grades, it can skew the data just a bit, when you're looking at different sub, subgroups. But that is, this is our makeup of West End. And then our overall GLP, we increased by a point in twenty-four, twenty-five in our overall composite score. We also increased in our, our economically disadvantaged, our white, and our students with disabilities, which we want to really celebrate that. We have, that's been a concerted focus for us. We do know we have some more work to do, we're not there yet, but we are excited about the trend that we're seeing in our students with disabilities subgroup. And then, for reading and math, I do want to note a three-year upward trend for our reading performance. Even though our math performance is, is higher than our reading, we are excited to see that all those things that we've learned the past two years, three years with letters, and with explicit direct instruction in reading, we're seeing that payoff here in our trend, in our upward trend in reading. We, again, we want to celebrate the increase in students with disabilities with twenty-three point three percent points, percentage points increase in reading, and sixteen point six points in math. So again, we're not there yet, but we want to celebrate those incremental, incremental benchmarks that we're finding with that subgroup. And we do noted a dip in math proficiency, but there was an increase in economically disadvantaged in students with disabilities there. We'll talk more about the math area in our plan. We really want to celebrate science, despite it being a re-norming year and new standards, we had an increase in proficiency. And I truly stock that to our K-three teams in our building, who are building that strong foundation of science and social studies within our, our students. Also, this cohort was the first, since I've been principal, that had a dedicated science and social studies block in fourth grade. So we started blocking in fourth grade, when this cohort was fourth graders. And so, having that foundation coming into fifth grade was just a game-changer for them. And they truly enjoy having that dedicated time in that. So, they also, you know, they're big kids, they get to switch classes. They're hot stuff, so. So when we look at our growth, we do, we did not meet growth. It was a little bit of a gut punch for us, but we pulled our, our pants up and kept on working, dug into the data. We are excited to continue to be a B-school and striving for that next level. We did dip in growth, however, our school improvement team spent time over the summer and early this school year digging into that data to pinpoint areas of opportunity and develop targeted supports. And what that might look like is ensuring that we're instructing at high levels, making sure our rigor is there, and also allowing our students to have opportunities for productive struggle. I know Kate's been at school and done some data dives with us. Donna, I'm spending all week with Donna, my favorite. Donna was there Monday, and they're gonna be back on Thursday to do some data dives with us. And that's really one of the things that we've pinpointed, is that our students come to us mostly proficient, or at least with a very strong foundation already, so it's up to us to grow them and make sure that we are providing them in a safe environment with those stack scaffolds, areas and opportunities to have that struggle. Because if we struggle most, when we're trying to figure out that problem, right? I'm sorry, we learn the most when we try to figure out that problem. Read, no, what I say, no, I know, yeah. Um, and then, so our first goal, this goal is focused on our proficiency. We want to grow five percentage points in the next two years. And we picked five because we looked at our trend, and we wanted to be very intentional about how we were trending. If you look at reading, we increased about a point to a point and some over the last three years. So we really wanted to be realistic, while also stretching ourselves. Also, when you're already at these higher numbers, it gets a little bit more, it's not impossible, but it gets a little bit more challenging. You have to dig a little bit deeper. So we wanted just to make sure that we were setting all of our folks up for success. So we focused on those five percentage points overall, and then again, in reading, math, and science. And then those action steps, these are just some of our action steps, not all of them, but some that I think highlight the best parts of our plan. We do have an intentional focus this year in optimizing the PLC process by ensuring all grade levels and content areas are utilizing effective Common Formative Assessments. We created an hour student's mindset, so the whole school owns every child by creating, we call it the spreadsheets of all spreadsheets. It is a master data tracker for ELA and math, so every staff member has access to every student's data for those Common Formative Assessments. And so, that just, again, builds that community and that culture of, these are our kids, not just mine, and I'm not gonna close my door and do my thing behind closed doors, we are owning everything. It also helps the students own that, too. We're refocusing on data and then using that to impact our instruction, and digging deeper into the four PLC questions, making sure that's what's guiding our, we call them CLTs at West End, guiding those talks. We're not talking about the field trip, we're talking about how are we impacting instructing with students? And using effective high-yield strategies. Last year, we invested significantly in professional development for our staff with Solution Tree and with Learning Focus. And one of the things with Learning Focus was scaffolding and effective assignments, so making sure that those assignments are standards, align to standards, and rigorous enough for our students to make sure that they are growing. And then goal two is our growth goal. This is where we want to get back on track, where we know that our students can be. So it's, again, it's a two-year goal, so over the next two years, we want to make sure that we get to that exceeds expected growth level. So after this year, we hope to be at zero, which is met, and then from, or, or better, we'll take better. And then, by the end of twenty-twenty-seven, or June twenty-twenty-seven, be at exceeds expected growth. And some ways that we're gonna do that is making sure that we are focusing on the rigor, really being intentional about the rigor with our students. That's where we're gonna get the most bang for our buck with our instruction. So these action steps illustrate our commitment to create consistency in our instruction, which is paramount, especially with math, and across grade levels, with intentional vertical planning, enriching our students with club opportunities that allow them to learn in creative and out-of-the-box ways. I'll note the year that we exceeded growth, this wasn't the puzzle, but it was part of the puzzle, is we had club opportunities for our students after school. And they, we invited community members in, and we weren't, we just staffing, just lots of different reasons, we weren't able to do that last year, and we want to bring that back this year, but we want to bring it back during the school day, so that all of our students have an opportunity to participate. So we'll do that once a month. Our pizza, our amazing pizza. Our amazing PTA just sent an all-call-out to all the parents asking for if anybody wants to host a club or has a, you know, a talent that they want to come and bring in and be a club host, we would welcome that. So that will happen November through May each month. So we're excited about that and our students are too. Looking at, sorry, I lost my spot. Out-of-the-box ways and then how to effectively utilize data such as EVOs to help them inform instruction and ensure all students are learning at high levels. We've partnered with West Pine Elementary in October to do a capturing kids' heart training of winning school culture. Going back to that, it's the whole child, right? It's making sure that our students are feeling safe and secure in their learning environment. And then they're going to perform if they do that. So it's the whole picture. And then, that's my plan. Our guiding coalition and school improvement team work diligently to analyze our data, identify areas of opportunity, develop a plan of action and implement targeted supports. We believe this plan shows our commitment to excellence in creating a sense of ownership, not just with staff, but also with students. And that's really where we're focusing this year is creating that ownership with students. And building a strong We Warrior. I told Dr. Locklear one time when I was working with him, I love data. I'm a school leader, we have to love data, but my ultimate goal is to make sure those warriors are good human beings when they leave me. Because that is the whole picture, right? When they go to West Pine Middle, I want Swafford to be like, you came, you are a warrior. Yes, in a good way. And as you may know, or you may not know, each morning we do repeat a quote, much like an affirmation. I know Kate knows that.
I do.
That says, make today better than yesterday and tomorrow better than today. And then last year, we added just a little kind of cheer for the students. And that's the staff will say, we believe you can, and that the students would say, so we will. And it's just creating that sense of belief with the students and with the staff. And making sure that each day is a new day. That's really what we, we want them to know is that each day is a new day with them. You do your best today, you're going to come back and do, you're going to start at a better place, right? On the next day. So you're going, your best is just going to continually get better. So I'm open to any question. I talk fast. I'm from the South, but I talk fast.
All right, who wants to go first this time?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I'm always going. Oh, okay. We absolutely love you. You're amazing. You really are. I loved it because you kept saying the word rigor, rigorous, rigor. I counted three times. I don't know how many. But that to me is important. That's awesome. So good for you. Your consistency in instruction, very important to you. That's really great. I love the idea of your clubs.
Yes.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Social learning, getting together, bringing somebody in to teach, terrific. And my favorite thing that you said is to be good human beings when they leave me. What could be more important than that? And you're talking about educating the whole child. That's it. You're fabulous. We love coming to your school. You're just absolutely amazing. Thank you.
You're fabulous. We love you. You're amazing.
Probably the color of my dress right now.
You are. It's okay. You're going to make it, I promise. A consistent theme, not just with you, but throughout the past two days, is the ownership that we're taking and encouraging our children to be part of that. And this might not be something that you can answer, but anybody in our professional development team or Dr. Locklear, was there a certain professional development tool or resource that we got that theme from? Or is that built into Moore County School? Did we have, I see Jamie signing. I want to know where that's coming from because I'm seeing it throughout. And I'm curious if we picked that up from somewhere else along the way or if we really did that ourselves. You don't have to answer that.
I think that's the best practice we've encouraged for many years. Is that getting our kids engaged directly in their own learning. Growing their ownership of it, their own monitoring of it, I think is a best practice. We see that in a variety of ways. From monitoring that from a class standpoint to monitoring that as an individual student to leading student-parent conferences and they're leading that conference themselves from their own learning and from their own data books. We see that in a variety of ways in different schools. But yes, ma'am, that's definitely a best practice and something that you see our leaders coming in here over the last couple of days. Just leveraging, growing that and growing the fidelity of how that's being done.
That is something I have noticed and it is impressive because I think, I mean, if, when we take ownership, it just, it's working. So let's keep doing it. And I've asked everybody, are you fully staffed?
Yes and no. I technically have a preschool position open. However, the, one of the assistants that's in that room will be out of her program. She's doing her student teaching right now and so she will be our new preschool teacher. And then we have a plan to fill her spot. But there is a plan.
Okay, okay. That's good, good. All right, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Great, great stuff. And on the theme of ownership, he won't say it, but I'll say it. It starts from the top. So, so ownership and that as a culture, you know, this is the facts, this is what we got, what are we going to do about it? And so I think that starts from the top. I think it filters down to senior staff and then directly down to principals too. So I'll also say that. And it's fantastic. I love the club days. I love that. I love schools that run clubs. Question I had is when we used to do club days, we used to love to ask the students what clubs they would like to see. Have you thought about asking them and what wild clubs have they come up with?
Nothing too crazy.
Okay, okay.
They, we, when we did it, so we have, it's third, fourth and fifth. So we, this would be, the fifth graders would have done it in third grade. And they oddly enough loved knitting was a big one and chess. And so we have chess, we have a crafts type thing right now that we're trying to figure out, like tease out what that will look like. Lots of crafts. We have outdoor sports. We did a running club in the past year, but I think we're just going to do like outdoor sports this time. So nothing crazy.
Okay.
Some gaming, but we're going to like, I'm going to monitor that one. What type of gaming? There'll be some board games.
Yeah, well, and you'll be surprised. One thing I love is that you see so many different interests of kids. And one thing I would encourage you to do as you keep doing it is make sure the teachers know what those kids are doing in their clubs, like their students, as they leave out. Because it lets the teacher see the kid in a whole new light, which is really cool. The other thing I want to highlight is the science because I love science. You guys are at 85% after re-norming the test. That is excellent. That is really an accomplishment. Thank you, Kate, for sharing, sharing this data with me. So I didn't have to annoy her. I emailed her and she ran it over to me. But the state science average for fifth grade is 62%. And so you guys are 23 above the state, which is outstanding. And I just made a note, the elementary schools we saw today, 81.6, Vast Lakeview, Sand Hills Farm Life, 81.4 and 80% West Pine Elementary. So that's all very impressive work. And I wanted to ask that fourth grade block, is that something you're still doing?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, we will continue that as long as we can.
Great. And that's a huge part of that number. This research has shown over and over again that because we've tested so heavily in reading and math, science and social studies has just fallen behind.
Absolutely.
And so that intentional focus is how we're going to get to those numbers. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And thank you in general for everything. So that's all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hi, Ms. Lockme, how are you?
Good, how are you?
How are those two boys in uniform doing?
They're good. One is in the South China Sea right now and the other is in New Mexico training. So thank you for asking. They're doing very well. Thank you.
Good luck to them.
Thank you.
Would you expand for me philosophically on the notion of productive struggle?
So productive, good. So productive struggle, the way I understand it and people much smarter than me can jump in if they would like. It's basically, so an example, because I'm an example person, would be, and I got this from Kate, letting students create their own test questions. So, but you have parameters with that. So in order to do that, you have to know the content that you're creating those questions for. And our third, fourth and fifth graders are, teams are good about doing that. Error analysis might be another way to do that. So you give them a math problem that's wrong and you know it's wrong. But they have to figure out why it's wrong. So it's giving them a problem that you know that's probably a little bit too difficult for them or there's something in there that it's not just an easy recall question. It's something that they have to really dig deep into to try to figure out. But you're, you're there as the teacher to help, you know, make it a safe environment. Because we also have very high-performing students who do struggle with that. They struggle with not having the answer. So we want to make sure that they know that it's safe to not have the answer, but here's how you go about finding it.
So the out-
Okay, thanks.
So the outcome informs your remediation approach?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes. It's rigor.
Sure, it's great. Scaffolding. What's scaffolding?
So scaffolding is providing support. So just like you think of a scaffold on a building. When you're building a building or the Statue of Liberty, I always think of when I give this example to teachers. When they're rebuilding it or remodeling it, thank you. They have all the scaffold up, right? Or however much they need to make sure they're successful with their job. So you can scaffold down, which means a student might need a little bit more support. So you're providing maybe the same content, but a lower Lexile level reader for that person. Or you're scaffolding up, so a child needs to be enriched. So they've already mastered the grade level. So how are we digging deeper into that standard and providing them that support to make sure that they're continuing to grow their knowledge? So just, just like you would think of physical scaffold, that's what it is in education.
Great, super. You're kind of at the center of population growth out in your area. How are you handling that? How is the integration of these new kids? How many kids do you have?
We have 412. Thank you. Including preschool right now.
Sure. What percentage will you estimate are new kids coming in?
Not very many, to be honest. I would probably say less than 15% maybe. Preschool would be new because, just because of the nature of preschool. But we didn't get a lot of new students over the summer. So we don't have a lot of turnover or trends yet.
Great. Okay, well, good luck in your implementation of this plan.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, great stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to wrap it up, Ms. Lockme, these are great questions from our group and comments. I just, again, I was with Mr. Bimway with the rigor and my question was how, but you just explained it. I really think that's powerful and again, I've said this a lot today, capture it for others to learn from. Because you do have some really great results and we want to keep growing them. And that I think is your key, along with the club opportunity, the student involvement, the capturing kids' hearts and keep, and the way you're supporting your teachers to learn. So, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockme.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Thanks, bye. Good to see you. Grab all my things.
Hello, Dr. O'Neill. Thank you for being here today and welcome.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Oh, good.
Whenever you're ready.
I was driving the train here. I'm Dr. Amy O'Neill. I'm the very, very proud principal of West Pine Elementary. Thank you for having me here. Here you can see our vision, mission and core beliefs. These are our new ones. This is aligned to the district strategic plan that was adopted in June. There's a few little things I want to point out. On the core belief side, the third bullet, we are really working hard on building strong and positive relationships with our families and our communities. That's something that's really important to us, that homeschool connection. And then the last one, every adult in our school has a responsibility to support student learning. This is really just a part of who we are at West Pine. It's not just about teachers and teacher assistants and our EC staff and even our interventionists. It goes all the way to our maintenance staff. It goes to our social workers. It goes to cafeteria staff. Children can't learn if they're hungry. So we really believe that every adult in our school has a duty to support student learning.
That's great. And every board member.
You're a part of our team too.
Thank you.
This is a screenshot of our demographics. So approximately two-thirds of our student population is white and the remaining third is about evenly split between Hispanic, black and multirace. Here you can see our overall GLP. I'm very excited to see that we've got a little spike going on there last year. So that's exciting. We also have a significant increase in white and economically disadvantaged and in our Hispanic population. There's a small decrease in black and students with disabilities, but those populations are so small at our school that even just a few students can really affect it. So last year, we had 27 black students and 26 students with disabilities. So the decrease that you see there is the result of one to two students not meeting proficiency. In reading, this is a, this is a significant spike here. We're very proud of that. And when we look at our economically disadvantaged, at our students with disabilities, those are, those are good numbers. We're really proud of that. On the math side of things, we've just continued doing the work. We've got an upward trend that's continued since 2020, so over five years. And upward in Hispanic, upward in white students, upwards in economically disadvantaged. Again, with a small decrease in students with disabilities, but again, that population is quite small. And then for science GLP, we did see a decrease in our GLP. But with the new science standards, teachers not being as familiar with those standards, re-norming of the assessment, we still managed to get 82.6%, which we're really proud of. Here you can see our EVOs, which is a measure of school growth. We've accidentally continued a trend here. We were going from exceeds to meads back and forth every year. So we've continued that trend. We're hoping that it holds true and will be exceeds next year. Our school performance grade, we were kind of stagnant for a couple of years, right at that 69-70 mark. And you can see pretty out of the ordinary last year. So that's, we're really proud of that. So a three-point increase. Our first goal for our school improvement plan is focused on increasing GLP in reading, math and science. And in order to meet that goal, we are really focused on the weekly work of our PLTs. This has a lot to do with protecting that time too. So not allowing things that don't align with our PLT processes to cloud what we're doing in that, in that time. We're also looking at a lot of data, not only student data, but what does our walkthrough data look like, which we'll talk about in just a second. And then using that data to drive instruction. So looking at interventions, we do daily interventions. We've got a common intervention time for kinder first and second grade, which is unique. So we've restructured our master schedule to allow, to allow for that. So that way, if we have a struggling first grader and they need to go down to a kindergarten classroom, well, guess what? They're doing interventions on letter naming fluency, so we just scoot them on write-down. If we've got a high-flying first grader who'd like to go on up to a second grade classroom, we can enrich them as well. So that K2 intervention time has been really, really unique. Our second goal is focused on increasing reading growth in grades three through five. So we'd like to go from a negative .14 to a positive 2.01. That negative .14, it sounds bad because it's negative. It still meets growth, but that positive 2.01 is exceeds and we think we can get there in two years. Some of the strategies we're using to meet that goal are monitoring classroom instructions. So myself, my assistant principal and my instructional support facilitator do walkthroughs. We've got a walkthrough tool that we've created that aligns with the district walkthrough tool and we've got a monthly focus. So this month, for example, we're looking at examples of PBIS in the classroom. It's not just rewards and candy and carnivals. That's not what PBIS is. We're looking for- It's not just rewards and candy and carnivals. That's not what PBIS is. We're looking for very specific things when we walk through the classroom. And then providing our teachers feedback on what we're seeing, using data to determine what are our needs? What are our student needs? What are our staff needs? And providing professional development that align to those needs. There you go.
This is beautiful. Um, again, uh, just great work with focusing on, you know, the clear strategies that you want to use. They're connected to the Moore County Schools way. Um, you're very fluent with those processes. And um, you know, you're, I, I think the way that you've got it strategized with your PLT meetings, your data analysis, your interventions, I think that's um really outstanding and great job with the K-two intervention. That takes a lot of coordination. Could you talk a little bit about how you coordinate that?
Sure. So last year, we, I mean, we have a committed forty-five minute block it for every grade level. And last year as we were, it was in PLTs. We were looking at our data and saying, gosh, I wish that I could have this kid in that group. So over the summer, when I'm looking at the master schedule, it's kind of like Tetris or Mind Cap for Principals, you know? So I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, you know, we can do this. We can, we can structure this so that we've got three kindergarten teachers, three kindergarten TAs, four first grade teachers, four second grade teachers, all of our interventionists. We can support these kids all at the same time. It is tricky, but we're doing it. So um, just refining those processes, what it looks like has been a learning, you know, a little bit of a learning curve.
It'll take a while.
The staff is ready. They're like, they see the value um before and now even doing it. And so they're just, you know, trusting me, thank goodness.
Just get started or have you been doing it?
We started it at the beginning of this year. So we're-
This year, so we'll, we'll hear about it.
Correct. So we do four cycles of intervention. We're just at the end of the first cycle. So we'll take, we call it a two week pause. During that two week pause, we continue to support our students.
That makes sense.
But we're relooking at data. We're figuring out who's ready to exit back to tier one, who needs to be escalated to a tier three intervention. We restructure what we're working on. Um, so we just kind of realign things and then start our second cycle.
So that's using MTSS.
That's exactly right.
You're making it work for yours, your space in your school. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, who'd like to go next? All right, Ms. Bruno.
Yeah, um, Amy, I'm, he, this is phenomenal, but your K-two intervention. Uh, you get these kids when you're supposed to get them and doing this. And not only that, you're not just, you're not just taking the, the kids. How do I say this? You, you're doing it every way. You're bringing the, the kids who, who, who have got it. You're moving them up and the kids who need the help, you're moving them back. I, I am very impressed with that. That's phenomenal. And you're doing it at the age that they need it. Good for you.
Thank you.
Terrific.
I noticed you said something about protecting time and time needs protecting. So that, I mean, that's very, that's really valuable. So and, and what she's just saying, I mean, you're taking every minute of the day. I'm assuming it looks like you've really played Tetris and you're getting all your minutes and all of your time. So um, that, that's great to hear. Um, same question. Are you fully staffed?
We are.
Yay.
Dot, dot, dot.
Dot, I understand.
Our bookkeeper is retiring in December.
Shame on whoever that person is.
She's the last original member of the West Pine team that was hired back in two thousand and ten. So she's the heart and soul of our building. She's our placeholder. She'll be hard to replace. So we're looking real carefully for the right person for that role.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll help you as best we can with that. Um, anyway, if you need anything, let us know. I'm glad to see what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Ms. O'Neill.
Hi.
You're handing off a pretty good product to West End Middle School down the street. What kind of a transition, let me put it trivialize that in saying giving them a, a challenge to meet, to keep up. So what kind of a transition process do you have handing off?
Sure. So in the spring, we do have our fifth graders go over and do a field trip with the middle school. Um, Dr. Swafford and I work really closely when it comes to traffic control even. I mean, if you've been down in our neck of the woods, you know there's one way in, one way out. So even traffic control, I mean, we, we definitely work together on a lot of the things that help our students succeed, not only at West Pine Elementary, but as they go into middle school. We also share some key staff members. So our MFLAC, our Military Family Life Counselor, we share between us and West Pine Middle. And also our social worker, we share too. So that's great for families because they've got one consistent person between the two buildings. And then as they rise up into the middle school, those connections are still there. Those resources are still there to support kids.
Super. Great. Great work. Keep it up. Thank you very much.
Uh, sure. Uh, so great work, um, for sure. Um, who's your assistant principal?
My current assistant principal is Megan Carruth.
Okay.
She comes to us from high school land. She's uh, she came to us from Ashboro High School. We stole her real quick because she's great.
Interesting. Very cool, very cool.
Her husband is the football coach at Northmore. So she's got a good Moore County connection.
Okay, cool. Very good. And the what? Yeah, very cool. Excellent. Uh, I want to also underline the um grouping for K-two. I think that's really great that you thought creatively about that. Um, I just want to give you kudos for that because that, the master schedule is a problem. Um, and it can ruffle feathers if, you know, done a certain way. So I, I'm glad that you did that um and took the leadership on that. One thing I noticed, what was really interesting is um your Hispanic population really has grown consistently over the last four or five years. And since you're new there, you might not know the answer to this. But I'm wondering if there's, is it, is it a high ESL population?
No, sir.
Interesting.
So last year we had eight students who were um in our ESL program this year. I think we have ten or eleven. And even the students that are in there, their WIDA scores are very high. So WIDA is a reading, writing, speaking and listening assessment that we give to our um, English as a second language families or children. So those WIDA scores are still really high. So even the small population that we have that's ESL, they're high performing.
That's really cool. Interesting. Um, yeah, so great job and um thanks for all you do and make sure you tell your staff thank you as well. And we hope you're there for a long time.
I hope so too.
Thank you, Dr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Amy. Glad you're back in Moore County.
Yes, me too. I'm a product of Moore County Schools.
Yes.
That's even better.
I graduated from Pine Crest in the nineteen hundreds. We'll leave it at that.
She suffered through me teaching her.
Yes, it was my history teacher, so.
Great connection there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woo, this has been a great day, two days of greatness. And so we're at um board comments. I'll let you catch your breath for a minute and think, um, do you want to make any comments this afternoon?
I was gonna say, I was gonna go ahead and go first.
Yes, ma'am.
Which I think it was Mr. McCormick that stole my thunder earlier. Um, and let me get, let me gather those thoughts. Um. These people sitting inconspicuously back here in the corner. I have, I, I really mean what I say. Over the past several weeks and the last few months of the last school year, I heard repeatedly unsolicited and from different levels of, of Moore County Schools, how fantastic, how this is the best team that Moore County Schools has seen in twenty years. And it's kudos to you guys, but it's also reflective of Dr. Locklear and his ability to find the people to support him in what he does. And um, I, I just want that to be known. You were more valuable than you're given credit for and I appreciate you.
I agree with Shannon. I think you're amazing, all of you. Um, I think this was a wonderful afternoon. I love hearing from everybody. We've got some really, really great teachers and really, really great leaders in our schools. So I enjoyed it today.
Mr. Bimway.
Yeah. This annual review really is the only time during the year where we pull it all together with all parties concerned and talk about what it is they're doing and trying to do. I think this is a, a greatly informative thing for the spec, for the new folks and for the old folks too, for that matter. Um, thank the principals for what they do and the whole staff for the support you give them. Do it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. That was well said. Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, um, you are going to be the last word today. So uh, again, kudos to the staff. Um, incredible team. Um, one kind of um a communications note that I made, that just a random thought in my head that I think would be excellent is because I think uh, the principals have done such a good job succinctly talking about their plans. I mean, it's not a long thing to watch. It would be interesting, I think beneficial, to go into the YouTube stream and kind of chunk where each schools start and stop. And make sure we let the public know if you, if you have an issue with this school or if you want to know more about this school, here's twenty-five minutes of that's worth your time. And so how we can do that from a communication standpoint or technical standpoint, um, letting the public know how to, how to watch would be great. Um, not to get too philosoph, philosophical, um, but the, the three things that I wrote down here is this proves the power of local control. Um, I'm a huge local control person. Uh, the people that are closest to the problem are the best able to solve it. And I think we see that one hundred percent with our schools and our leadership there. Um, also the leadership pipeline, you guys have already talked about that. That is a true long game benefit that's been played in Moore County of building leaders and, and nurturing them in a great spot. And then of course, the Moore County Schools way is the same thing, a long game that's been played that you don't get to this point. Um, unless you've played that long game and played it really well. And so kudos to that. And the last thing I have is gratitude. I just feel grateful to be a part of, a small part of this system. Um, and all the great things that are happening inside of it. So that's all.
Well, it's hard to follow all of, all of you and your comments because that was amazing. Um, just again, reiterate the Moore County Schools way. We heard it for the past two days, spoken with ease from our principals and um fidelity of implementation and assessment of impact. So we are seeing the results of strong leaders, very bright people in their field. We appreciate all the parts coming together. This was a bucket, heart bucket feeling, two days. Um, we are so fortunate to have you all in the building and in our buildings. Our students are why we do what we do and you could hear that over and over again. Um, it's just, I'm holding this, my eyes are sweating. So um, just thank you. Keep doing the work. Let us know. We heard some things that I want to take back to my, you know, thinking moments, the impact of early childhood, Head Start Support, pre-K partnerships with families and children, our community impact. We've got, we live in a great place. Moore County is a trendsetter and we're state leaders in so many regards. Um, but I really am so thankful to this board and previous boards for believing in our people, for giving our people the tools they needed and the spaces they needed and the support. Um, but this was very valuable, Dr. Locklear. So thank you. Um, it's been a great two days. I don't know what else to say other than just keep doing the good work. Thank you for thinking of our children and thinking of them first. So, well done, team Dr. Locklear. I guess I have to ask for an adjournment. I could talk all day on this. So do we have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor say aye. Thank you to everybody. Have a great day.